We'll start from the side. Oh, yeah, because it already started up. Oh, currently no, it's streaming away, so it'll start up later. Correct. Dave was just here.
I wanted to call the Monday, August 11th meeting of the Falls Ridge City Council to order. Good evening, everybody. Let's start with roll call, please.
Yes, Ms. Connolly? Here. Ms. Downs? Oh, I'm sorry, she's coming in remotely at 7:30. Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Ms. Sean Siskott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Ms. Underhill?
Here.
And Mayor Hardy?
Here.
Thank you.
We are actually starting tonight's agenda with a closed session and then we will get to our regular business on the agenda. So for any members of the public who are here to give public comment or stay for the rest of the agenda, sit tight, we'll be back by 7:30 and start our regular meeting. So I'm going to read the motion to go into closed session. Upon a motion made by...
Underhill.
And seconded by...
Flynn.
And passed by a vote of the City Council, council went into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711.a8 for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. This is a zoning issue related to Pearson Square at 410 South Maple Avenue. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Downs is not here. Flynn?
Yes.
Sean Siskott?
Here. I mean, yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
And Hardy?
Yes.
And we are going into closed session at 7:03 PM. Mr. Shields, are we going to go into the Oak Room?
Thank you.
Sure enough, thank you. What I was gonna say, you want, I was gonna move it.
Oh, good.
There she is, live and in color. We're just getting settled before we get started, Ms. Downs. Thank you for everyone's patience. We're gonna resume our meeting shortly after coming out of closed sessions. If you'll sit tight. Okay, we are gonna reconvene in open session now. Upon a motion made by council member.
Connolly.
And seconded by council member.
Underhill.
And passed by vote of the city council, council reconvene in open session. Councilmember Connolly.
Yes.
And Downs, we haven't read you in yet, so I'm gonna skip you. Flynn?
Yes.
Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Your coming out time at 7:32 PM. Now, for the certification, upon a motion made by.
Hiscott.
And seconded by.
Connolly.
And passed upon from a roll call vote in open session, it was certified that one only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and two only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the body. Councilmember Connolly.
Yes.
Skipping Downs, Flynn?
Yes.
Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Underhill?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Okay, we are back in open session. Welcome, everybody. Let's start our meeting like we normally do with a pledge of allegiance. If I can ask you all to stand and join us, please.
Can we read Ms. Downs in first?
Who has a motion for Ms. Downs?
I have a motion. Councilmember Downs, could you please identify your remote location and reason for participation by electronic means?
Yes, hi, good evening. I'm in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, dropping my son off at college, so I'm here for personal travel.
I move that the city council approve electronic participation by councilmember Downs in this meeting for personal reasons pursuant to the city council's adopted policy.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Miss Flynn on the second, call roll, please. Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mayor Sean, Vice Mayor Sean Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, council. Welcome, Ms. Downs. Now, we'll do pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's get started. Do we have a motion to adopt tonight's meeting agenda, please?
I move to adopt tonight's meeting agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting agenda is adopted. We have two special proclamations to kick us off tonight, and I see Mr. Lozaro has joined us remotely. Can you all hear us, Bob?
Yes, I can. Thanks for having me.
As people may not know, Bob Lozaro has been executive director of NVRC and is retiring after a very long and incredible career of public service, and so we want to take the opportunity to recognize Mr. Lozaro. So if you'll indulge us, we are gonna read a special letter in recognition of you, and I'm sure some of us will have comments as well. "It is with great appreciation and deep respect that the Falls Church City Council recognizes Robert W. Lozaro Jr. for his exceptional service as executive director of the Northern Virginia Regional Commission, NVRC. Since his appointment as executive director in 2017, Bob's leadership has been instrumental in advancing regional collaboration across Northern Virginia. During the COVID pandemic, he worked with the city's former mayor and former chair of NVRC, David Tarter, to coordinate with local, state, and federal partners to ensure the region received equitable access to the CARES Act funding and ARPA funding and inaccurate information about the vaccine rollout. His tireless work helped the city of Falls Church and the region respond to the pandemic as effectively as possible. Bob has positioned NVRC as a strong resource for environmental sustainability. He spearheaded and managed the commission's Solarize Nova program, which has resulted in more than 1,000 solar installations valued at over 28 million of private investment, including in Falls Church, or 9.2 megawatts of solar generation. The city council is grateful for Bob's contributions to the Commonwealth in his service as mayor of the town of Percival, chair of a number of Virginia Municipal League committees, and a member of the Board of Directors of the Virginia Association of Planning District Commissions, the Metropolitan Washington Airport's authority, and the Local Energy Alliance Program, Visit Loudon, the George Mason University Research Foundation, and the Virginia Land Conservation Foundation. Bob has built a foundation of financial and organizational strength for NVRC that will serve the region for years to come. The city council wishes Bob Lozaro health and happiness in the next chapter of his life and extends warm and sincere appreciation for all of his work and his impact on the city, the Nova region, and the Commonwealth." So, Bob, we wish you could be with us today in person to receive this, but we wanted to congratulate you on your incredible career and wish you all the best.
Thank you, Mayor, and I wish I could be there as well in person, and it's been a pleasure to work with you and the council, past and present, and city staff have been marvelous over these last 10 years of service at NVRC and previous life as mayor and member of the city town council in Percival. And you have one of Percival's great exports, your city attorney, who I know is sitting in a room and probably blushing or grinning, but anyway, it's just been fabulous, and I appreciate your kind words. I've loved the work. I love working with the people in the city, your staff, and while I will be out of the region, I will be following all things Falls Church in Northern Virginia because there's a lot that the city can be very proud of in terms of best practices around creating infrastructure, mixed-use development, et cetera. So, I'm now a member of the Town Planning Board down here in Leland, North Carolina, and I plan to take some of those lessons learned from city of Falls Church and other places for the betterment of our new hometown. So, thank you very, very much.
Terrific. Well, you know, you couldn't really quite retire, given that you're gonna be on the planning board, so we're glad that you're taking your talents elsewhere.
Thank you.
Any other comments from up here? Oh, Ms. Connolly?
Bob, I first met you, well, prior to the pandemic, but saw you in action most during the pandemic, and the meetings that you convened with former mayor Tarter to pull together the leaders of Northern Virginia to deal with the beginning of the pandemic when no one knew at all what we were doing, you really made sure that those people were in the room together, working together, to try to solve problems for our jurisdiction. So, although there is much that you have done, that always stands out of my mind as something really admirable, and your leadership there was incredible. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Ditto that. Yeah, so one from one small city mayor to another, we wish you all the best. Thank you for always making sure that Falls Church had a seat at the table at NVRC, so we are grateful for your service, and we wish you all the best.
Thank you, Mayor.
We will get you this letter either in person sometime, or we'll get it down to you in Leland.
I told Mr. Shields that I will be in Northern Virginia all of next week, so Wyatt owes me lunch.
We have some very good restaurants here in Falls Church now, so.
Yes.
Many to choose from.
I'm all ready.
Terrific. Well, you are welcome to stay for our meetings, we're gonna have an exciting agenda, but we also know you want to enjoy your Monday night, so thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. Bob is a special guy, so we wish him all the best. Okay, second item is a proclamation declaring September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and Vice Mayor Sean Hiscott will do the honors.
Thank you. It is indeed an honor to read this. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children...
for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report that cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among U.S. children between infancy and age 15. This tragic disease is detected in more than 16,000 of our country's young people every year. An estimated 400,000 children and adolescents are diagnosed with cancer globally each year. And whereas, one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer, many infants, children, and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas, spreading awareness and understanding of childhood cancer can help prevent deaths by encouraging early diagnosis, consistent treatment, and promoting accessibility to treatment for all. And whereas, childhood cancer is one of the key causes supported by the Falls Church Annandale Lions Club, who help to provide for cancer research, patient well-being, and community awareness through fundraising and outreach efforts for local charities. And whereas, this month, we remember young lives taken too soon. Stand with families continuing to face childhood cancer, celebrate children who have triumph over cancer, and rededicate ourselves to combating this terrible disease.
Now therefore, I, Letty Hardy, mayor of the city of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby designate the month of September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Falls Church, and encourage the community to stand alongside families, friends, and professionals who lend their strength to children fighting cancer, and help us move towards new cures, healthier outcomes, and a brighter future. Do we have anyone in the audience helping receive the proclamation, or anyone who's been touched by cancer? We would welcome you to... If not, we will
We'll send this to the Lions Club.
Great.
I've been in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next item, which is oaths of office. Do we have anyone in the audience tonight to receive an oath of office?
Yes, Claire McCray is here for the library board.
Great. Welcome, Ms. Cray. And thank you for re-upping your service at the library board.
First one.
Oh, thank you.
You're not gonna say much. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Library Board of Trustees according to the best of your abilities, so long as you go on?
I do.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
You're good. You're no fun.
I got one first step.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you again. And for anyone who's curious about joining our Board of Commission, we encourage you to check out vacancies. We always say it's a great way to dip your toes in public service and getting to know local government. So thank you, Ms. McCray. Okay, let's move on to receipt a public comment. Madam Clerk, can you start with a summary of the written comments?
Yes, these are the written comments councils received since their last regular meeting. Regarding the proposed solid waste fees, Dan Ayer of North Lee Street opposes initiating any kind of solid waste fee or mandatory composting. Julie Bertoa of 115 Great Falls Street opposes the plan to add a solid waste fee, lowering the tax rate to offset the fees, as lowering the tax rate to offset the fees would negatively impact those with homes of a lower value. Laura Chalkley of 416 Hampton Court expressed concern about the tax and fee inequities in the proposed solid waste fee plan and asked that council defer a vote to listen to more residents. Dee Ellison of 298 Gundry Drive expressed concerns about the proposed fee and urged the city council to delay a final decision until residents have had time to weigh in on the policy. Rosalie Causebelt of 531 Great Falls Street opposes the change because it would create problems and hardships and requested that the current solid waste system remain in place. Dave Redman, 116 West George Mason Road opposes a change in solid waste fees. Matthew Sampson expressed concerns about the proposed fees regarding tax rate equity for lower-valued homes. Sandra Tarpinian of 105 Great Falls Street opposes the solid waste fee plan because she said the tax rate plan creates a regressive tax. Farley Will of 319 Pennsylvania Avenue forwarded some questions about composting under a new policy. And the Environmental Sustainability Council wrote to support an incentivized fee, which would set a solid waste fee with greater cost differential than the fixed variable fee in order to encourage waste reduction. In other issues, Sean Dakin of 410 South Maple Avenue provided his thoughts on city advisory boards, flood risk, and artificial turf. The following wrote in support of bike lanes on Roosevelt Street, Sarah Beldon, 300 West Rosemary Lane, David Bloomgarden, 506 Greenwich Street, Ron Erdman from Arlington, Anne Marie Vid of 805 Hillwood Avenue, Ayla Schneer of 507 Roosevelt Boulevard, and Jacob Williams, 505 Roosevelt Boulevard, and Joseph Zadar didn't provide an address. We had two pieces of correspondence from your advisory boards. The Falls Church 250 Committee provided an update on their work in preparation for the 250th anniversary of the United States, and the Planning Commission recommended that more authority from municipalities to incentivize utility companies to underground cables be added to the city's legislative priorities for the General Assembly.
Thank you all for the public comments we received, so we will move on to receiving public comments tonight, either in person or virtually. You call the first speaker, please.
Yes, and I will let everybody know that we do set a three-minute limit on comments just to make sure we can get everybody in, and this little light will tell you when you've got... It'll be green, it'll turn yellow. When it's time to sum up, you'll have 30 seconds to sum up. And so our first speaker is Steve Page, followed by Gail Wattsworth.
Hello. Hello, my name is Steve Page from 610 Langston Lane. I've spent more time on solid waste than me or my wife could have ever imagined when I started looking at this. So tonight, I'm gonna kick it simple and stick mainly to one topic: equity. I'm not exactly sure what that word means, but I'm using it because everybody else does. While the proposal is revenue-neutral for the city, it creates winners and losers. The biggest losers are single-family homeowners appraised under $2 million. And the less your home's value, the worse it is for you. I won't dwell on this since it is well-known to the council and seems to be an acceptable loss to some. What I want to talk about tonight is the winners, and there are three. Group one is the condo owners. State law prevents tax rebates, and that's frustrating because it would fix their concern. I do see you condo owners, but the gains here are small compared to the downsides. Group number two is governments, federal and Virginia state. Because solid waste fees are not tax-deductible, it reduces the salt deduction for homeowners. I would say that based on IRS data, it impacts nearly everyone who owns a home in the city, but whatever, I get it, it's easy to dismiss this as a minor issue, confusing, or just plain whining. Please do recognize that salt is a real factor that amplifies homeowner losses. Most municipalities, including Arlington, changed to a fee model when the cap on salt was taxed at $10,000. Falls Church is simply late. The last group of winners are the development LLCs that own large mixed-use apartment complexes throughout the city. One example, Florida-based company Founder's Row Holdings LLC would get roughly a $20,000 annual benefit, over three times that of Park Towers. In theory, they could pass these savings on to the tenants, but will they? No way. Rits are repeat for the other large apartment buildings. The simplest way I can summarize the proposal is this: It gives modest amounts to condo owners and homeowners over $2.5 million, as well as benefiting developers, federal, and state government, while taking from homeowners such as those in Winter Hill. The negatives far outweigh the benefits. I do want to thank the council members who were available for questions last week. I learned a lot, but one thing that stuck out to me was the additional real estate tax Virginia permits called commercial industrial, CNI, that both Arlington and Fairfax use. It's rather ridiculous that we don't because it leaves a lot of money on the table. Respectfully, maybe the council could set up a new task force to suggest the city implement a CNI tax and see what recommendation they come up with. Residential landlords in Falls Church pay almost a third less in business taxes than Virginia statute permits. And also, there is no CNI here. I am oversimplifying and lumping different taxes together, but I only have three minutes, and these projects are called mixed-use developments for a reason. One last important point: Either city benchmarks where neighbors are not. I don't know why we have the tax structure we do. Developers can't move their buildings now, so we should get the benefit from them, not the other way. I also think city council should work to benefit us, the residents, not the developers. Putting it all together, as my daughter would say, it is a bit sus. There must be a better way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next, we have Gail Wattsworth, followed by Peter Markham.
Gail Wattsworth, excuse me, 200 North Maple Avenue, Park Towers condominium. I first came before council on the issue of equity for condominiums regarding trash collection 38 years ago. A lot has changed in the city since then, yet that inequity has persisted despite being in conflict with city code. However, I'm not here tonight to focus on the past. I'm here because we have, right now, the opportunity to correct this inequity. I want to thank council and city management for convening and supporting the Solid Waste Management Task Force, and I especially want to thank the task force for their diligence, thoughtfulness, and commitment to fairness for all residents of Falls Church. I, and those standing with me tonight now, support the task force's recommendations for a fee-for-service solid waste collection system. We urge council to approve these recommendations without delay. Equity is important. We have waited long enough. Let's make sure that 38 years don't become 39. Thank you.
Next, we have Peter Markham, followed by Jarrett Thompson.
This will be very brief. I've spoken on this issue before. I want to compliment Wyatt Shields and the city council for working to resolve this issue about taxation and fees with solid waste. I'm very sorry that single-family homes will be disadvantaged. I hope that this does not pit one section of our community against another, and I trust that the council will be able to give relief to people in Park Towers and other multifamily structures and try not to disadvantage those people in single-family homes. I'm sure you will do this. Good evening.
Thank you. Next is Jarrett Thompson, followed by Fred Thompson.
Hello, I'm Jarrett Thompson, 6565 Flagmaker Court. I'm excited to be here and talk about solid waste today and the collection of it. Basically, I live in a townhome community with an HOA, and we pay directly through my HOA fees. We pay for trash pickup. They pay, I know they pay thousands per year for trash pickup for everyone, and it seems odd that we would also, in our real estate taxes, pay additional services from the city for pickup that we don't receive. And, you know, I know also on top of that, just across the street in Hillwood, they receive solid waste collection from the city. They have their Falls Church bins out there. I mean, we have to pay for all of our trash bins, recycling bins, all of that as well. If something breaks, I have to run to Home Depot and get a new trash bin, so that's, you know, additional cost to us as well. And, you know, I agree that I think a tax rate reduction across the board would be great, and then having the additional breakout of the fee for those who are receiving that service makes sense rather than those who are already paying for it who may be part of an HOA like I am at Cherrywood, paying for trash pickup and then also paying for trash pickup from the city that we don't receive. I think that's basically my point, and thank you for your time.
Next, we have Fred Thompson, followed by Joseph Shirizzi.
So I have submitted some thoughts to the council in an earlier meeting presented on behalf of all of the condo community here, about 1,000 residents, and our concerns, but I just want to focus on three things tonight. The first one is, I hope, we talked about equity, but I hope the city will look at fundamental fairness. The people that receive a service should pay for the service. In this case, we can identify the 3,000 specific addresses of the people that get the service. That tells you that it's not a community service available to everyone, like public schools, or parks, or roads, or other activities. This is a service more like water to your house, electricity to your house. This is trash collection to your house. And so I think that we need to look at that basic issue that fairness and equity here is people receiving the service should be the ones paying for the service. Secondly, and that is the case, I would say, in almost all the neighboring communities, and I look back at my own history, it's the case at every place I've ever lived in Virginia, including Charlottesville and Reiko, every other place. It's typical. This is untypical, what we do. The second is that having a fee structure, and I did serve on the Solid Waste Commission, having a fee structure really helps us manage and plan it better than we can if we don't have a fee structure. And we are pushing the envelope a little bit in the suggestion of the task force to create a different price for larger bins and smaller bins, and that does address some of the issue of equity with larger houses and smaller houses, because for houses under $750,000, over 50% of those have the smaller bins and would pay the lower price. Only 9% of the larger houses have the smaller bins. So that does tilt towards a more equitable situation for smaller houses. We discussed a lot of ways to do that, some we were told we couldn't do because they weren't legal, but I still think there's still room for improvement over time. Like the tax rate, the solid waste fee rate is going to be set every year. This is going to be a continually improving project. This is not a one-time thing, and I hope the city will continue to focus on this and look for better solutions over time. Finally, I want to talk about the tax rate reduction. The city has already balanced its budget. It has identified the programs that it wants to do this year. It has identified the tax sources to pay for these programs. This is the only outlier, which is how do we fund solid waste? And if we create a fee, which I assume, and I hope we will do, to fund solid waste, there's no need for another tax increase to the general community, and people are not being given a rebate, or a check, or anything else. Just the entire community is not going to be taxed, and that's a good thing for all of us. Thanks.
Next, we have Joseph Shirizzi.
Good. Okay. Hi, my name is Joseph Shirizzi. I live on Gundry Drive in Falls Church. First on waste, I think that the proposed plan is a lot more fair and equitable, especially for people living in condos and apartments, which their numbers have increased a lot in the last several years in Falls Church. So I think it's a lot more fair than what we have, but it does seem a little unfair that my total amount that I'm gonna pay, and I live in a small townhouse, is gonna go up by about $200 a year, whereas if I owned a $2 million house, it might have gone down $200 a year. So I would very strongly support the ESC's idea of creating an incentivization system to create less waste. I don't even put out trash every week because I don't have that much of it. I grow a lot of my food and harvested more than 50 pounds of food this month from my front yard. So one very big watermelon, you know, so subtract that. And then in regards to housing, I want to thank everyone on the new Housing Commission that was created for affordable housing. I think Jeff Pearson and everybody else on that are really champions of affordable housing in our community, so thank you to all of them for the time they put into it. I think that we're not doing enough, though, and we are really in an unaffordable housing crisis, and it is kind of tearing apart the seams of our society in so many places. I would like to see the city of Falls Church really get serious and take some more steps to really be a leader in our region on that. That could be imminent domaining abandoned buildings on Broad Street that are extremely ugly and are a blight to our community, and issuing municipal bonds to build more workforce and public housing, which Falls Church has not done in a long time. We've relied on large developers to put a few units of affordable housing and a lot of condos that have gone up recently, and in those same condos, just in the last eight years, more than $100 million has gone into parking. So developers have come to Falls Church, invested $100 million in our community, just in parking alone, at an average cost of about $55,000 per parking spot. So I would like city council So I would like city council to really get serious this year, remove parking minimums entirely, and commit to the steps suggested by the Affordable Housing Commission, and build more affordable housing in Falls Church. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's all we have signed up for general public comment.
Anyone virtually?
No.
Okay. When we get to items requiring public hearings, people are welcome to speak on those items as well. Let's move on to item 10, report of the city manager to council.
Thank you, Mayor Hardy, and members of council. So we'll have a short manager's report tonight, and we'll be joined by Deputy City Manager Andy Young and our CIP coordinator, Caitlin Sobsey. And we'll hit just some of the highlights. We had a report in your packet as a read ahead. We'll note if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer it, but we'll hit just a few of the highlights on progress since our last quarterly report, and there's some great things we've been able to accomplish.
I guess before we turn it over to Ms. Sobsey, could we turn up Mr. Shields' mic?
You might not want to, but...
Okay. While we work on that, I guess while we're on CIP, thank you to DPW and Wren Park staff for the lovely ribbon cutting and the progress at Berman Park. We did that with the community at 6 o'clock, so thank you to Ms. Flynn for kicking us off, and all the staff working getting us there. I think this is one of many things in the CIP that we've been able to accomplish as a community, so we really appreciate both the community's investment, as well as staff's investment, in really updating our infrastructure, adding open space, recreation opportunities. I think we look forward to more to come. I think we have both fellows, as well as maybe Cavalier Trail, as kind of the next big parks and playgrounds to be invested in, so...
Right. And so Caitlin Sobsey is joined by Amanda Brain, our Public Works Director. So we'll turn it over to the two of you.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I'm Caitlin Sobsey, Capital Improvements Program Coordinator, and I'm joined tonight by Amanda Brain, Public Works Director, and we're providing an update, a quarterly update on the Capital Improvements Program, or CIP. We were last here in May for the last quarterly update. Just going to hit a couple of highlights really quick. In the staff report, we're reporting on the progress of 37 active CIP projects currently. Of those 37 active projects, we also are reporting seven new fiscal year '26 projects in development. That in-development section, towards the end after active projects, is new fiscal year '26 projects that are in development and that will be kicking off, and as well as some grant applications that are pending or planned. Of the 37 active projects, we have 20 on target or green, six at risk or yellow, and 11 behind target or red. The good news is a lot of those behind-target projects, the older legacy projects, are now in construction, and we're completing those projects. I did want to highlight for you a couple things in the staff report. For completed projects, we did include some more information, some more details on completed projects, per the feedback last quarter. I think five out of six of those completed projects were completed on budget, and four out of six were on time and on budget. Also, starting this quarter, completed projects, if you'll remember, we used to change the color to green once upon completion of the projects, and starting this quarter going forward, all completed projects will not be automatically classified as green, but they'll be classified as red or yellow if that was the consistent, you know, report previously. And so that might change the, when we look at the quarterly trend analysis, that might change that analysis a little bit. We might see an uptick in reds because now, when projects are completed, if they were over six months or a year delayed, you know, schedule, or over budget, then we'll keep those as red. We'll keep those as behind-target. And I think other than that, we did also, I wanted to highlight, we had the ribbon cutting earlier tonight, and we've had some really good press on some completed projects recently, and some projects going into construction. There was some press about the roundabout that started earlier this month. And also tomorrow, August 12, there will be a special CIP edition of the Focus on Falls Church newsletter that's going out, that will also be celebrating these completed projects, the six completed projects in this report, as well as others that we've completed in the last year, just to highlight and celebrate the success and all the, as we talked about earlier tonight at Berman Park, thank you for the Kona Ice, by the way, as we talked about a lot of hard work on staff, and also community input and feedback, and also investment, tax dollars and grants go into these projects. So we're excited that we're able to share those successes now. And other than that, I think we're ready to answer questions.
Great. Do we have questions for Ms. Sobsey or Ms. Brain on the CIP? Vice Mayor?
I actually just had a comment to start off, but I wanted to thank you for so quickly making all the changes from one quarter to the next, and I do think it's really important that we, over time, can see and track how, you know, delayed those projects may have been, and then start to analyze what the reasons are. And a lot of them, as are cited in this report, I think there are four or five that are related to Dominion. So then, when we go back to negotiate with Dominion, then there are these examples of what has been delaying our projects, whether that's up by the high school, or, you know, the LED installation, et cetera. So thank you for making those changes. I think it'll be easier for us to track patterns and make changes according to that. Thank you.
Ms. Downs has her hand up?
Yes. Thank you. Thanks so much for this report. You know, we all love the CIP, so... First of all, so a couple questions. One is, I was looking at the green vehicle fleet and charging stations, and in the notes, it says that we're anticipating to have them purchased in fall of 2025, but the charging stations wouldn't be until spring of 2027? Is that right, that there would be that long of a gap before the charging stations are in?
Our staff is still working on both of those issues, both the green fleet and the charging stations. We have a new staff member, I'm the CIP project manager on the facilities special projects team, who's going to be working a lot, among other things, on the EV charging stations. And so we might be able to advance that timeline, but that's our current target.
Okay. So it's no problem. I just was curious about that. And then, you know, I know all of us on council were really excited that we were able to do the, you know, clear the funding for the solar panels on Aurora House, and I read about the roof reinforcement. Now, would that be something that if we do have to, I don't know who this question would be for, or maybe we would need to hear back? You know, you don't have to answer tonight, but I was just wondering if that would make it cost prohibitive if we needed to reinforce the roof?
It could require additional funding if it does need to be reinforced. We haven't determined if that's required yet or not, and we're, staff is currently working on, looking into that.
Okay. Thank you. I guess just keep us posted on that, because I know we're all, we are all really excited that we could fund that, because, you know, we're doing everything we can to further our environmental agenda. I guess this might be, I don't know who this question would be for, but in terms of West Falls Church and the construction, and of Haycock and all that, do we know if that's going to be looking better next week when school starts?
I still, our team is working on it with the developer, and well aware that school will be starting, so we're working with the developer on that.
Thank you, Amanda. I appreciate that. Just two other quick things. One is, so Smart Cities, I wasn't, I guess I didn't, I know we had that presentation, so it won't be fully complete till 2028? That's correct?
Yeah, we put 2028 as the deadline. That's when the grant, I believe, ends, but, you know, it's sort of an ongoing program. There'll be infrastructure being put in place, there's a lot of other aspects of that Smart Cities program, but we, for the purpose of this, we put 2028 when the grant officially ends.
Okay. So we will start seeing some, you know, results from that before 2028? This is just sort of when everything is finalized? Is that right?
That's correct. This is Cindy Muster. The traffic signals will be done first, and before that, the out-years will be where we're looking like at the, and in-between will be adaptive lighting. Probably the public parking and some of that shared parking concepts will be towards the latter part, towards the end of the grant.
Okay. Thank you. And then, one last, this is a comment. So I was, you know, reading through, when I was looking at Greenway Downs, traffic calming, and, you know, that we're using a grant for that, and I believe Oak Street Elementary was a grant as well, or funding from the state, I can't remember, but, you know, I was thinking, it might be, not to create more work for you all, but I don't know if there's some quick way you could put a little notation or something if we're receiving some grant funding on any of these projects. I just think it's for the public, I think it would be interesting for people to see, like if I was really not aware, I would think, wow, all of this is being paid out of local funds, and, you know, some of it is not, right? Some of it comes from grants. So I just think it might be more informative if we had some way to, and nothing, not trying to make it more cumbersome, but just maybe it's an asterisk or something like that, where if it's partially or fully funded by a grant, or the state, or what have you, I think, I just think it would be good for the public to know. Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Ms. Underhill?
Just a quick question, following up on Debbie's question about, or comment about Dominion. Do we have, I mean, do we have any leverage with Dominion if they are behind schedule or behind on projects and slowing us down, and then, you know, potentially costing us more money? Because, you know, every time we have a delay, that's more costly for us. Is there any leverage at all in the process of dealing with them?
We do have leverage because of the franchise agreement, but each case, we'd have to look at the situation, were we impacted by supply chain delays, or were we impacted by storms where the same crews get redeployed? I think one of the things that Amanda and I are looking at is to do a better job of triage and prioritizing, and make sure that we're working proactively with Dominion, so they're very clear what we need, and then be able to measure when they're off the schedule and therefore impact us. So we've been working on a master list where we'll be able to triage it and have a holistic look.
Great. All right. Thank you. Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, I want to go back to the issue of sidewalks, and there remain too many sidewalks with poles in the middle, signs in the middle, narrow sidewalks, areas without sidewalks that need them. So does this plan really systematically address the sidewalk issue all across the city? And if not, I would ask that we come up with such a plan, and if necessary, look at funding it. But it's a constant issue that affects, I think, all of our citizens. So could you comment on that? Where are we really with regard to that? And then the other question is, where are we with a systematic approach to narrow traffic lanes so that we can create more real estate for things like bike and pedestrian, and at the same time, not endanger car drivers?
Yeah, so a couple thoughts on sidewalks. We have the Missing Links program that is addressing sidewalk gaps, but I hear what you're asking is where, there's the poles and the narrow gaps. One item of work that addresses that is the ADA Transition Plan, which, as you all know, has been in process. We have a consultant who's been working on it with the staff. I think our plan is to bring that to council sometime this fall. We've discussed it with the CACT and with the HSEC, and that, one of the things that does is kind of categorize various deficiencies in infrastructure, in both infrastructure and in facilities regarding Americans with Disabilities Act. That, one thing, one thing that staff is thinking about is how we will then take that information and implement it. It is not one project. It is data that will be implemented through a variety of CIP projects, and transportation projects, and, you know, Missing Links projects, and a variety of items. But from both an ADA standpoint and sort of general standpoint, it's certainly on our radar, thinking about sidewalks. Narrow lanes, I mean, that came up in the, most recently, I guess, in the greening of Lincoln conversation, and that was just kind of a project-specific answer. And so one answer would be, it would be sort of a project-specific answer as we move forward. Our corridors are all slightly different. Another thing we'll be coming back to council with later this fall is a broader discussion about complete streets and safe streets and Vision Zero, and so that might be part of that conversation, thinking about a complete streets toolbox, and that sort of thing. That's where we are on that right now.
So thanks a lot. I think we've made progress in all of these areas, project by project, but I think there's a real desire for a systemic look at all of this, and a systemic game plan to address it. A third area would be control of driving behavior, which is a public works issue, it's a police issue, perhaps it's the zero program, but that's a third area where we need to bring together a multidisciplinary group to look at all elements of it. It's enforcement, it's signage, it's public communications, it's roadway design, it's transit, and it's bike and pedestrian safety, and also providing alternatives for people to get out of their cars. So can we expect the Vision Zero, perhaps this would be a combination of complete streets and Vision Zero, where we take a truly comprehensive look at all of these issues that we've been addressing project by project? And we have made progress. I don't want to say that we haven't made progress at all. I mean, we lowered the speed limit, we have good enforcement, I think enhanced enforcement. I think we've done some things at particular intersections. So it's not a negative, but I think there's a sense now about really addressing these issues systematically, and then figuring out how we need to fund it appropriately. So any comments on that?
Yeah. I would say staff actually has a kind of interdisciplinary conversation later this week, scheduled about some of that. We'll be trying to think, starting kind of an interdisciplinary working group on exactly what you've talked about, to bring together primarily DPW planning and police, but probably others, and we'll be reporting back to council on that again later this fall, as we kind of think through it together, the systematic interdisciplinary approach.
That'll be great. Thanks very much. I very much look forward to the results of that work.
Thanks. That's excellent, because I think that's been on our work plan for the past year-plus, and so we're very much looking forward to adopting complete streets as a policy, because frankly, I don't think we have any interest in micromanaging how wide every project's, you know, lanes are, but I think as a council, we believe in narrower streets, safer streets, and we want to make sure that staff is set up to make sure that that happens. On sidewalks, I'm going to be a bit of a, get on my soapbox about this. So we've talked for years about kind of having a master list about sidewalks, and so I think it's not only repairs, it's missing links, and then the comprehensive look at where we have whole stretches, where we don't have sidewalks on the whole side of the street that may be a high-traffic corridor, or may have vulnerable, like, students getting to school, and hopefully the ADA plan can be one component of it. But I feel like I've lost track personally of how many memos we've gotten from the CACT, as well as residents, telling us where we have sidewalk deficiencies. I really would just love to have one master list and be able to compare that against our resources, and be able to realistically talk to the community about, here's how much we can get done this year, is this enough? Or should we have a budget conversation about how to increase the throughput of getting to sidewalks? Because I think most of us probably agree that that is, sidewalks and pedestrian safety continue to be like the number-one thing we hear about, and I think being able to link both the need, as well as how much we can get done in a budget conversation, is really where this needs to go. So, thank you. Any other, kind of, Ms. Flynn?
I just had a quick one, and this is more along the lines of returning to an earlier conversation about greening of Lincoln, just in light of some of the, you know, comments Mr. Snyder and the mayor just made. But I think during that, you know, since it is a CIP project, I'll just take the opportunity to provide my further thought here on it. During that conversation, or work session, a few weeks ago, I guess, we had a conversation about why we were designing roads that were supposed to be 20 mile-an-hour roads with 25 mile-per-hour sightlines. And I think, you know, it was sort of like, well, you design it for the greater speed because then you have the longer sightline, you know, and the car can see from further away whether a person's there or not, and so maybe it's counterintuitive that you design higher for a lower-speed zone. But I guess I want to push back on that, because in thinking about it further, like, I do think we should be designing 20 mile-an-hour roads for 20 mile-an-hour vehicles, and not sort of encouraging greater sightlines than what the speed we want cars going at to be, because they're just going to know, right, that they can treat the road as a thoroughfare instead of actually having to interact with people in the, on the sidewalks, or who may come out of homes, right? And that if you see further along, it's when we have the poor driver behavior of, oh, I'm going to like look down and text because I don't see a pedestrian like anywhere two blocks ahead of me, as opposed to like, oh, I may have to actually pay attention because I'm supposed to be driving slower, because we're accommodating and accounting for everything else that's supposed to be happening in the space. And so I just, you know, wanted to, again, make the press for actually designing that road with lower, with the lower speed limit, with the intent of like actually having the cars going no more than 20 miles an hour. cars going no more than 20 miles an hour.
Ms. Underhill?
I can't help but follow up. I wanted to second what Erin said. Yeah, oftentimes when you're designing for a higher speed limit, maybe you have a larger clear zone or whatever else. So that means we have fewer trees or whatever else on the street. And actually, we know that trees and other items slow cars down or slow drivers down. And so having greater sightlines also means not having trees or other things around. And we don't, we actively want to have trees and other things to help slow people down. So anyway, thank you. I completely agree.
Yeah. Yes, we, we understand the larger intention of wanting to slow traffic. And it got into kind of a, yeah, nuanced sort of traffic engineering conversation, which I'm, I'm not, you know, prepared to, you know, get into right now. But we, we talked with our consultant about that and we'll, we'll get back to council about that specific conversation about design speed versus posted speed versus sightlines. We'll, we'll get back to that as the design progresses.
Ms. Connolly?
Thanks. I, I just have a question about two that are marked as red, and they are really school projects, but if you could just tell us what you know about the stadium complex concessions and restrooms as well as the baseball field improvements. It's good to see that. It sounds like the baseball field will be complete by October. I know a lot of, I, when I was over there the other day, I saw lots of gravel coming in, so I'm assuming that is also a good sign that they're hard at work there. But do you have any updates on the concession stand at all?
The updates that I received from, from school staff was that the baseball field is in construction now and on track and fully funded. The school board funded it and it is on track to be completed by October. The only thing I know about the concession stand is what's shared here is that it is still in design. And so that completion date of spring 2026 is what they could provide at this time.
So part of the problem with the baseball field, I know, was changing staff and miscommunication between permitting staff and school staff. And I just want to make sure that as we go forward on that concession stand and restrooms, that, that the cities, the general government staff and the school staff are working together. And I know there's still staff turnover at the schools, and I'm not quite sure who's in charge of that project at this point in time. But I really would hate for it to fall through the cracks just because there are staff changes along the way.
That's been the case. We've been in touch with them regularly and, and established the connection, connected with, you know, who we need to connect with at the schools and, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, I just had a couple of items to wrap up. I noted that there was a stormwater project that had a budget shortfall. Is that something that council needs help with? Do we need to take care of it in a budget amendment? Or do we have line of sight to getting that cap closed?
That's an anticipated funding shortfall, so we don't, it's not really confirmed yet. We, we anticipate that there will be a funding shortfall. We are, it's still in very early preliminary design right now. And so we just have to keep working through that design and try to design to the budget that we have. And we'll come back for more updates if, once we, you know, determine requirements and scope and all of that and figure it out.
Okay. And so Wreckin' Parks is on my mind because of our event earlier tonight. Remember that in our FY '26 budget deliberations, we deprioritized Crosman Park, kept Cavalier Trail in? But I think we had discussions about whether we wanted to update Crosman with more kind of like adult equipment? Is that kind of planned or underway or discussion? Or is that something that we need to find funding to do?
If it, if any, if Crosman is planned or underway, I am not aware of it. We, we did prioritize Cavalier Trail Park in fiscal year '26, and that's going to be funded through the surplus that was in the Park and Rec, Park Master Plan program. So that is still on, planned for delivery in fiscal year '26, but I'm not aware of anything at Crosman Park at this time.
Yeah, we would need to come back to council next CIP development to discuss that, that Crosman Park.
Okay. And I know that we reopened the community center with the new HVAC, and we weren't planning a big kind of celebration, given it was really just kind of an interior like update plus HVAC. But I do think that it would be nice to announce to the community that we did invest a large infrastructure upgrade and a greener one there. And so I would ask staff to kind of consider some sort of surprise, you know, welcoming celebration of some kind, even if it doesn't have to be a large one like we did at Burman's night, because I do think that's a nice improvement for the community.
We talked about signage on that, too.
The community center is, that's one of the projects that's included in the newsletter that will go out tomorrow, the Focus on Falls Church newsletter to residents. That, that project and the community center generator are both included.
Or even some signage. I think Vice Mayor had a really good idea at explaining to people that we now have a geothermal HVAC as you enter the building. Like that would just help increase awareness about where people's tax dollars have gone. I think that would be a nice thing to recognize that. And then a broader question. So we talked about Dominion being kind of a big theme in terms of why we have projects in red. Are there other themes that council should be aware of and how can we help remove those roadblocks?
I think the ones listed pretty much sum it up, right-of-way acquisition and negotiations. We have, we have made improvements to our right-of-way process and procedure, but I think we're continuing to try and make improvements there where we can.
And that's just property owners unwilling to give us right-of-way and that legal process taking longer?
Or sometimes it's the legal process, once we've already reached a negotiation and then the title companies and, and brokers get involved, like that is sometimes dragging on sometimes. So we're just working through, it, it could be either, yeah. And not a lot of funding shortfalls right now. That has been one of the consistent delays or recurring delays in the past. But utility companies and, as we mentioned, we're working through that as well.
Yeah, I don't know much else. Caitlin just referenced the, on the right-of-way procedure, we did work with the city attorney's office on a, a new kind of standard operating procedure to help streamline some of that process, both on the, the legal end and the staff end and the consultant end. So we hope that should expedite some of the processes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Anything else on CIP or do we need to talk about the council strategic priorities as well? Is that, I know that's also the second half of the manager's report, but I didn't know whether you had planned update for us. Mr. Shields?
What we know is, as Councilmember Downs said at the beginning, the CIP is, is where a lot of interest is. We do have in the council's packet a report on progress on council strategic initiatives. I think Mr. Young was going to hit some of the highlights on that. We could keep it real short just to cover some of the points on the cover page and, and then answer any questions on that.
Sounds good.
So I think this just recently got added to your packet earlier this evening, so you maybe didn't get a chance to pre-read it. So I think that maybe that's where the mayor's comments coming from. So, so we got it, got it out to you, albeit a little late. So, Taya, do you have the slide deck?
It's hatching.
It's taken. Okay, so maybe as that comes up, piggybacking on the last conversation kind of leads into, as we talk about some of the accomplishments, we get the community center HVAC problem or project done. We're about to lean into, I think, making some better progress on our government operations energy action plan. And, and I think it speaks to kind of one of the, one of the ways councils helped us kind of on, on the overall CIP is we've been able to fill a lot of key positions here over the last couple of months. And so we have a new project manager on the facilities side, Mr. David Nguyen, that's going to really help us. I think Caitlin mentioned the EV charging, but, you know, I think that's one example, and we've had several other people added to the staff that's going to help move, move our, our projects forward a lot quicker.
Do you want to go through the slides yourself?
Can we? Oh, okay.
Just use that.
All right. Well.
It's the right. Nope.
I think we just advance it one slide, we're going to hit the cover page and that's about all.
Oh, so it's on the video. Okay.
Yeah. So I think, there we go. All right. So kind of highlighted three key accomplishments. I think you're all familiar with all of them. Talked about the, we've talked about the community center HVAC this evening, big accomplishment. We got our streetscape standards updated and we implemented the first instance of that out at West and Broad Street that I think turned out really well, kind of made a good, good kind of melding of compromise for crosswalks of kind of aesthetics as well as safety. And we're going to talk all, I spent a lot of time talking about solid waste this evening so that, you know, highlighting that task force is our other accomplishment. Coming up next, I think we've got a busy fall, so we're scheduled to come back to you all on, on October 6th to talk about the tree canopy follow-up. I think you all had a, a number of questions and some analysis that you wanted staff to conduct back in April, I believe. So, so that analysis is wrapping up and we'll have that for you all in October. Amanda talked earlier about kind of us coming to you on October 20th to talk about complete streets and Vision Zero. So we're, as she mentioned, we're going to start conversation across departments this week, but I think we'll, we'll come back and address some of the things that, that you all are looking for staff to do there. We're kicking off our permits process assessment this Thursday, so we're excited to get that work started. Kind of the output of that is we're looking for, we'll be receiving process maps for the three kind of major kind of primary sources of, of permit work here in the city. So residential renovations, residential new construction, and then commercial upgrades or changes in use of commercial space. In addition to the process maps, the team will be giving us recommendations on quick wins, process improvements we can make, as well as ways to better leverage technology in our process. And some of the key work I think you all hear about and will see coming pretty soon is a survey of permit process customers as well as stakeholder interviews. And both of those will get underway towards the end of this month and the beginning of September. And then the last one I had here is the affordable living policy, which we're also going to talk about this evening. So happy to dive into any of the other ones. Recognize you all having a chance to comb through all 38 slides or whatever that we have on this, but, but those are the highlights.
Great, thank you. Looks like Ms. Downs has her hand up.
Thank you so much, Mr. Young. I don't, I'm, just have a very broad comment. I think this document is so impressive and informative. And Mr. Shields, I was wondering if we, if there was some way we could highlight it or run a link to it in Falls Church Focus? I just think it's so informative and helps people understand what the council's been up to and what, how the city staff supports us and we, you know, we work together as a team. But I just wanted to throw that out there because I, before coming on council, I had never seen this, you know, and it's just, I think it's, it's really informative for our, for our community. Thanks.
It's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that suggestion. We'll follow up and, and make sure that that happens.
Other questions or comments? So I want to talk permit process app. I'm excited to hear that we're going to get some recommendations by the end of 2025, I think you said?
Correct.
And some stakeholder interviews. And I think I would encourage our consultants to do, besides interviewing obviously people who've gone through the process, going through the process. I think actually observing how work gets done is really powerful. And so if they would actually be able to shadow kind of people at the desk and shadow someone who's submitting a permit and see like, gosh, what's the steps they, what are the steps that they go through? Where are they clicking? Are they finding that they have to find a bunch of paperwork? Is there a lot of redundancy and waste in the process? I think having formerly been lean and Six Sigma certified, observing how people get their job done is actually a really good way of defining and figuring out where there's opportunities of low-hanging fruits. I would encourage both our consultants as well as people working on the process, just actually observe how kind of cross-department linkages work, where there's, you know, handing off of papers, where there might be, you know, waste or errors in the process that leads to longer cycle times than we'd want.
No, appreciate that.
But that's really important, though. I think it's the very unglamorous part of getting work done, but also really important because the faster someone can open a business, the faster they can, you know, deliver value to their community, the faster that we get tax revenue as well in the city, and the faster we get a great new service or business as well. So I think opening businesses is much tougher than it needs to be and look forward to really improving in Falls Church.
We do as well.
Okay. Well, thank you for the report. Given that it was posted late, we're happy to look at this and we'll follow up offline if we have questions or comments as well.
Sounds good.
But thank you for continuing to update us on this and getting in the, the cycle of doing this on a quarterly basis. Okay, let's move on to council requests. Do we have requests for Mr. Shields?
Vice Mayor?
I just have one question. I wanted to confirm the, the utility poles that are along Park Place by the new Broad and Wash development. I recall in our negotiations that those were to be undergrounded, but then I think they're going to be undergrounded with the Park Place. Is that correct? Is there undergrounding or they're not going to be undergrounded at all?
So they did underground all along Park Place except for, you know, along their frontage. Those last three poles that exist there, the price was about $1 million to get rid of those, and so they were, it was not part of the VCs. It is part of the Park Avenue Great Streets project. That is, so we've been working on the preliminary engineering for that, but that's still going to be three years out probably before those poles are removed.
Okay, that's what I thought. We'll confirm with the business owner. Thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Thanks very much. This relates to a, a letter that we received from the 250th Anniversary Committee, and I just want to call people's attention to it. And that's my request. Let me read quickly the mission statement because that's something that the committee definitely wants city council to be comfortable with. Quote, "In recognition of the 250th anniversary of the United States, the City of Falls Church honors its distinctive place in Virginia's and the nation's history. From its indigenous roots through its colonial history and path-breaking role in the civil rights struggle, Falls Church continues to evolve as a vibrant, diverse community. Its history reflects the broader American journey, one grounded in the ideals of liberty, equality, and democratic self-governance. This milestone invites both reflection and aspiration. We recommit to the founding principles that have guided our nation and to the importance of progress in social, political, and economic issues that can shape a better nation. We commit to a commemoration that is historically honest, grounded in founding principles, future-focused, and collaboratively designed with the community organizations that enrich our community." I strongly support this statement, and not only as a statement of the 250th anniversary, but it seems to me it's a statement that could be read as counter to the most recent developments occurring in the nation's capital.
Other council requests?
I have two quick ones. Neighbors on South Oak mentioned that even though the hocks are open, there's still equipment. I think there's a big trailer out, and I know we're doing final inspections from the hawk signals, but there's a big trailer still sitting on South Oak as well as random bricks and cones. We can follow up with the contractors about that. And then different residents expressed really great appreciation to city staff and police for helping reopen USPS after hours. I know that that was an inconvenience when that had to be closed, and so thank you to HHS and our police for working with the community on that.
Ms. Lynn?
I just had a quick one. I had raised recently the light that was down on Great Falls by the tennis courts that's still down. I don't know if there's any update on that. And I guess in the last week, the light that's around the corner now on Little Falls is also down. So basically like the two lights in that corner with the park in the middle, now we're out both lights and sort of the debris is around both. So I've, I've been kind of fielding questions about that and what the repair timeline looks like and how much the city can clean up the space while it's waiting for Dominion at all.
They're both Dominion poles, and I was reviewing with Public Works today their status. The one on Little Falls was just called in as a work order to Dominion today. The other one is in design and we're anticipating a schedule for when they'll come back out and do Great Falls, so we'll, we'll follow up on that. We've reached out to Dominion on both of them today.
Yeah, I don't know if there's like tree work or whatever that needs to be done in the meantime, like before Dominion's out, because the tree next to the one on Great Falls is still like sideways in terms of the roots and whatever there to do our piece while we await their doing their piece.
Ms. Connolly?
Thanks. This is just a question on unemployment rates. Ms. Hardy had shared the Northern Virginia Regional Commission dashboard that showed unemployment across the region and in the City of Falls Church and an increase in the last month. And I just want to request that staff is tracking that so that we are aware of what's going on, especially in Falls Church. I think we've all talked about the fact that we were worried that September, October, November, there will be an even bigger increase in unemployment. So I'd like to have that tracked, please.
We will, we are tracking it and we share that concern, yes.
Great, thanks.
Thank you in advance for following up on the council requests. I think we're ready to move on to business on the agenda. Madam Clerk, can you call the first items, please?
Yes, and this is an item on second reading. Oh, it's a resolution. It's a public hearing on TR 25 dash It's a public hearing on TR 25-12, Resolution to amend the City of Falls Church Comprehensive Plan to Update Chapter 10 Housing a Complete Community to Add Affordable Living Policy.
So this item is before council for a public hearing. In final consideration, the staff recommendation is adoption of the proposed motion and adoption of the plan. Mr. Brendan Woodley, is that going to walk us through changes to the plan reflecting comments from your last work session? And we also have members of the Affordable Housing Working Group who are joined in the audience tonight, and we want to thank them and recognize them for their work on this. Mr. Woodley?
Thank you, Mr. Shields. The staff report here before you tonight comes as a final reading of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment to Chapter 10 titled Housing a Complete Community. That includes in that chapter an amendment titled Affordable Living Policy. On June 16th, Planning Commission held a public hearing to discuss the Affordable Living Policy. The Planning Commission voted to recommend the Affordable Living Policy Amendment 5 to 0, and this motion has been included in your staff report as attachment 4. So what I can do is, well, before I ask for comments, I'd just like to mention that we had a fantastic partnership with Navaha, Northern Virginia Affordable Housing Alliance, who were able to provide facilitation services as well as help in drafting the policy. And finally, just a heads up, while we have been working on this policy for over a year at this point, in the meantime, staff has actually been working on some of the initiatives proposed in this policy. So that includes things like expanding the role of the Affordable Housing Fund to mirror the process of the CIP, as well as we took the time to develop an Affordable Living Dashboard, which we plan to roll out to you guys very soon, to the public very soon. So we're very excited about this project, and we want to share it with you guys. So what I can do is either walk through some of the changes, or I can just take that moment to give you an opportunity to provide comments. Do you have a preference?
We spent a while on this in work session, so why don't you just briefly tell us what's changed since work session, and then I think we're ready to vote after that.
I'll run through the major updates. If you want to go to the red line, that's attachment 2.
And high level would be fine. I think, I didn't see anything really substantive, other than removing the priority item that...
We moved a couple of things and added one or two paragraphs. Specifically, that first paragraph in the introduction, we added a sentence there. If we go down to page 8, we did revise the 1.4, Section 1.4 there. We added a couple of sentences. This is a request from the council where we wanted specifically to more adequately reflect the goals in this document, to make sure that it's clear that they are no longer, that they're not, that they're going to be weighed against financial and economic forces, as well as the strategies in this are not going to be exhaustive in nature, that if there are other opportunities, we will address them as well. Let's see, page 14, I think, was a significant one as well. Yes. So last time we spoke, there was some questions about this graph. We did a little bit more of an investigation in it. If you come down a little bit, I think, maybe page 15? Okay, well, we added, we added, maybe go back to 14. We added a paragraph. It was actually in one of the earlier versions. We kind of moved things around, and we ended up getting dropped, so we put it back in there, that it gives you a little bit more of explanation of what's going on with that graph. But we also wanted to provide a little bit more context for that, and that the way this graph is designed, it's not just 2017 versus 2022, it's a five-year assessment of those years. So it's 2013 to 2017 and 2017 to 22. So of course, that time span has a lot of variability, specifically with regards to the pandemic. A lot of stuff going on there and a lot of kind of deviation in terms of how we track information and when information actually gets updated in terms of like, what sort of public assistance was received from people. So it, that's most likely an explanation for that, for that actually decrease in cost burden homeowners, cost burden renters. But I think one point from this, I think is very valuable, if born true, I think is probably something that might warrant more investigation, but this actually demonstrates a tangible positive impact that government assistance can actually have on people's lives. So I think that's probably a valuable lesson from that. I think those are the major updates. I can go ahead and pause right there and give you guys an opportunity to comment.
Ms. Connolly?
On that piece that you just mentioned, that was my question, and I appreciate that explanation. It makes a lot more sense now. I think that's good. The other thing that changed, I don't think you mentioned, was the note that unhoused people and the property yard, that changed a little bit to be more clear that we would like to...
Cleaned up that language a little bit.
Increase opportunities to care for unhoused people, which are currently, so that was a good cleanup, too.
Appreciate it.
Other comments since work session? Do we have a motion then? Actually, we need to open up for public hearing. Sorry. I'm going to open up for any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now I will entertain a motion.
Move to adopt TR 25-12.
Second.
Ms. Snyder on the second. Can you call roll, please?
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskat?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
Congratulations to staff and thank you to the work group for this long, this long journey we've been on, so thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, let's call the second item, please.
Yes, we have an ordinance before you on second reading and public hearing. TO 25-10, Ordinance to Vacate a 4,133-square-foot portion of a plat that established the sidewalk location at 111 East Broad Street. Terminate the public sidewalk easement associated with the vacated sidewalk. Approve a revised plat establishing a 4,092-square-foot relocated sidewalk location at 111 East Broad Street, and accept a public sidewalk easement over the relocated sidewalk.
And Ms. Laura Arseneau is our staff lead for this item, and I'll turn it over to her for a brief report.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Good evening, I'm Laura Arseneau, and I'm here tonight to present a brief overview and update for the Broad and Washington easement proposal. The purpose of the proposal is to align the recorded sidewalk easement with the sidewalk's actual constructed location at Broad and Washington. The net change is a loss of 41 square feet of sidewalk, or 0.02% of approximately 15,400 square feet of total streetscape on the project. The proposal includes the vacation of the old easement, a review of the revised plat, and the review of the proposed new easement. Staff recommends that council adopt the proposed easement as presented. Key facts of the proposal include, excuse me, and to maintain the required 20-foot streetscape and to retain a 10-foot clear sidewalk along both East Broad Street and North Washington Streets. The adjustment is needed due to minor construction deviations in architecture from the approved site plan. There is no negative effect on pedestrian access or the streetscape experience. A work session was held at city council meeting on July 7th, 2025, and a council held a first reading on July 14th. Planning Commission approved unanimously this proposal on July 16th, 2025, and the council public hearing meeting tonight was properly advertised, and no public comments were received. That concludes my presentation, and the applicant is here to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Since first reading, I appreciated the addition of the photo showing kind of the brick articulation and the more detailed follow-ups that we've had, so thank you for that. Do we have questions or comments for staff or the applicant? Mr. Snyder?
Thank you. So even though it's 41 square feet, there is economic value in that. What is the city getting in return?
Well, I think you could argue that 41 feet is being added to the tax rolls, and so there's some very minor positive fiscal impact for that. But we have viewed this as, in the course of construction, there are things that happen, and because this is a minor change, our recommendation has been to sort of treat it as such, and that's why we've not tried to negotiate for more economic benefit than
Other questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to, at second reading, I'm going to open this up for public comment. Any members of the audience wish to comment on this item? Let me do so now. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt TO 25-10.
We have a second? I'll second. Ms. Underhill on the second? Call roll, please.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskat?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Okay, let's call the third item.
Yes, our next item on second reading and public hearing is TO 25-11, Ordinance to Amend the Code of the City of Falls Church, Chapter 26 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Articles 1 and 3, to grant certain enforcement authority to public safety aides employed by the city's police department.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'll present this evening's staff report. There are no updates since you last saw it. The council reviewed this item at its July 7th work session and held a first reading on July 14th. It's now before you for second reading, public hearing, and final consideration. The objective of the ordinance is to extend to public safety aides the existing authority that has, that is granted to law enforcement officers for parking enforcement, abandoned vehicle response, and traffic control. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Do we have questions for Mr. Letts? There were no changes since first reading. Okay, I'm going to open it up for a public hearing. Any members of the audience wish to comment on this? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt TO 25-11.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Flynn on the second? Call roll, please.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskat?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
We look forward to seeing our PSAs out there. Okay, let's call the fourth item, please.
Yes, another item for second reading and public hearing, TO 25-12, Ordinance to amend the, amend ordinance 1321 to increase the salaries for the Planning Commission of the City of Falls Church.
Our planning director, Mr. Matt Matusik, will provide a brief staff report on this item.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is the second reading and final consideration of the item that was presented in July. There have not been any substantive comments and changes since that time. As a reminder to those maybe watching, the effort originated back in the spring through a letter by the Planning Commission Chair regarding significantly updating the rates that were established previously in 1990. So since it's been 35 years, it's been more than enough time to, I think, revisit those rates. The recommendation in front of you is to increase the monthly salary from $100 to $250 per month for commission members, and from $150 to $300 per month for the commission chair. The proposal recognizes the burden that out-of-pocket expenses play a part in participating in that important role, given the full scope of initiatives and projects the Planning Commission has to review every given month, and making sure that through this change, we are addressing the broader and more inclusive participation that we aim to achieve in the city. So the fiscal impact of this change would increase the annual costs from $9,000 to $21,600 per year, and that resulting change of $12,600 could be addressed through a future budget amendment that could come forward to the council for review. So with that, I will conclude with staff's recommendation to adopt the proposed ordinance that is in front of you. Happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. And welcome, Mr. Matusik, for your first official item in front of council. Do we have questions or comments for staff since we had this at first reading? Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Any members of the public wish to comment on this? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt TO 25-12.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Connolly on the second? Call roll, please.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskat?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, council.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Matusik, and please pass on our thanks to the Planning Commission for their work as well. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to first readings now.
Yes. Our first item for first reading is TO 25-13, Ordinance to amend Chapter 40 Taxation, Article 7 Tax Relief for Low-Income Elderly or Permanently and Totally Disabled, Sections 40-133 and 40-134, to amend the definition of gross combined income and the exemption and deferral eligibility guidelines for income, assets, and percent of exemption and/or deferral.
And on this item, we'd like to invite the chief deputy for the treasurer's office, Nikki Calaveritinos, to provide the staff report. This item is before council for first reading, and it is a series of changes to our tax relief program to actually bring the code in line with where the treasurer's actually been administering this program for the past two years after a briefing for the city council in 2023, and it will codify some expansions of this benefit that were discussed at that time. Ms. Calaveritinos?
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Good evening, council. Since we last spoke about this in the work session a week ago, you had had a question that was added to the staff report and answered. I don't have it committed to memory. If we could scroll down a bit?
Yeah, it was like 2.3% of our population, if I remember, if that was the question I Thank you for providing that data.
You're welcome.
I guess while we're on that, I did look up our demographics comparing us to Fairfax County. I think it was the latest chapter of the comp plan and demographics chapter. Our 65 and up population is comparable to Fairfax County, and so the fact that the participation rate is half of Fairfax County, I'm glad that there is a note added by staff that will try to increase and boost awareness of this program, because I do think that if the programs are comparable, that more people should know about it and take advantage of it if they are in need.
I've been in touch with the director of OCOM, and we plan to advertise it and also hold another workshop in January when the new applications become available to engage the public and increase participation.
One idea could be just go to the senior center, because I imagine that our senior population may not be as email and social media friendly, and so if we can kind of go to the people and tell them about the program, like go to the library, and the library runs a number of senior events as well, and so actually just go to where we might have more of our 65 and up population, take advantage of city services, and make sure they know about the tax relief options.
Excellent suggestion. I've made a note.
Great. Do we have questions or comments on this before we... Do we have a motion then? This is first reading.
Move, I'll move to grant first reading to TO 25-13, schedule a public hearing and second reading for September 8th, 2025, and advertise the same according to law.
Second.
Ms. Flynn on the second? Call roll, please.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Sean Siskat?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's call the next item.
The next three items are related to solid waste. The first one is TO 25-14, Ordinance to amend, reenact, and recodify Chapter 34 Solid Waste of the Code of the City of Falls Church.
And so for this item, we have these three coming back. We'll sort of present on all three of them together in a unified way, and then, of course, we would need a motion and an action on each of these separately.
Would you let me just read the rest of them now? Is that?
Sure.
Okay. We'll dispense with that. The second is TO 25-15, ordinance to set the solid waste collection fee in accordance with Chapter 34 Solid Waste Section 34-3 Residential Solid Waste Collection of the Code of the City of Falls Church as of July 1, 2025. And the second is TO 25-16, ordinance amending the rate of tax levy on real estate for tax year 2026 as previously set in Ordinance 2091 in order to account for revenue generated from a new solid waste fee.
So Deputy City Manager Andy Young will provide a council briefing on changes that have been made as a result of the work session discussion. We have a PowerPoint presentation, which is basically all the slides that were at work session. I think Mr. Young is gonna go through them more quickly than we did at your last work session, but we can slow down to answer any questions that the council might have. Since our last work session, I also just did want to take the opportunity to thank again the members of the task force that worked with staff to explore different options on how this, how changes to the solid waste program could be considered and provide the council with some solid and well-vetted recommendations. And I also would just like to kind of hearken back to policy in the solid waste management plan that council has adopted, that the idea of moving to a fee for service is something that is looked for on a policy basis for some of the equity issues that the council has heard from the public about, and also to create a platform so that market forces can provide some incentives for people to throw away less and to reuse, recycle more. And that's really kind of the whole thrust of state policy with respect to solid waste, which the city is obligated to, to try to meet those state mandates, and is really kind of the heart and soul of what the city's solid waste management plan is trying to accomplish. This is, you know, I think staff use this as one tool that could help move the needle in reducing our waste flows from the city. So, Mr. Young, I'll turn it over to you for the briefing.
Okay, great. Thank you, Wyatt, and thanks to Wyatt and the rest of the team for handling the work session last, last week while I was gone. Okay, maybe we'll go to... Well, I have two versions of the same thing up, so let's go ahead and skip ahead to... Sorry. Let's go ahead and skip to slide four, please. So just to kind of recap, you know, when we talk about the 3,107 solid waste customers, this is a breakdown of those customers by property value range, as well as kind of whether they are 35-gallon or 65-gallon customers with the city today, and 82% of the properties are between 3/4 of a million and $2 million. So I think the big update from, from the work session last week is an adjustment to the program costs that we're allocating to the fee. So on slide five, you'll see we have the base contract costs for the curbside collection as well as the tipping fees, as well as the proposed costs for composting, both the composting crew subsidy that we've done kind of in the current program, as well as the added cost for the organics cart implementation, puts us right around $1 million for the overall program cost. So go to slide six. So we're still proposing a two-tier fee based on the trash cart size, so trying to kind of come up with the right wording there for either 35 gallons or folks that don't have a cart and use stickers, or the 65-gallon cart that's predominantly used in the city today. We looked at several other fees, but this is what we're kind of focusing on, I think, tonight, how that translates into the fiscal impact for residents. If you go to slide seven, so you can see with the reduced costs, we're looking at a $327 fee for the 65-gallon cart and a $292 fee for the 35-gallon cart. Still a $35 difference, it's because the costs that we took out of the fee were fixed costs that were allocated equally across all 3,107 customers. Any, should we just kind of go through everything, or do you want to have some questions now on this one, or?
The major change was just reducing the solid waste back to $1 million and then changing the fee to the 327 and the 2...
Correct.
Okay.
So that's, that's the main thing, and happy to answer questions or continue on through the rest of the presentation. Mr. Shields?
I would say for the benefit of the public, let's hit the highlights.
Let's go ahead and keep going. Yep. So I think for, we'll go to slide nine. So as part of the program, we're recommending to institute relief from the solid waste fee that largely mirrors our process for senior and disabled real estate tax relief. This is consistent with what we've seen with other Virginia municipalities. There are some nuances to that regarding kind of one- and two-person households, and so we've included language in the code that ties us back to the HUD federal housing assistance thresholds that are required by state code. There are 44 participants in the real estate tax relief program today. 29 of those are solid waste customers. With the reduced fee, we're looking at a cost estimate of $9,500 that we would look to handle through a budget amendment later in the fall. And we would handle the administration of this largely with an adjustment to the real estate tax relief application that we would modify this fall. So on the organics cart, so we're recommending providing a new third cart, organics cart to customers, and this would allow us to phase out the current opt-in composting crew or composting program through compost crew. So the cart would be used for both organic yard waste and organic food waste. It would be through a weekly collection process, just like yard waste is handled in the, in the city today, and all of that material would go to the composting facility in Prince William County called Convertis. So we think this is gonna simplify and streamline the disposal of yard waste in the city. So a lot of folks won't need to use stickers and bags and have to drive out to Home Depot or go up to Giant Nursery to do those. So I think this provides an opportunity to increase the participation in composting service in the city for food waste. So I think we have 580 of our 3,107 customers doing food compost today, so this would be an opportunity to increase that number. This will reduce refuse going to the landfills and the waste energy facility, reduce truck traffic on city streets, and through those things help us meet our waste and carbon emission reduction goals.
Sorry, can I ask a quick question on that one? Because it caught my eye twice, and I didn't ask about it in the work session. Can you explain how, and I may just be missing something here, we are reducing truck traffic on city streets?
So right now, to deliver services for the city, there's two sets of trucks that drive around the city. Well, there's four sets of trucks that drive around the city every week. There's trucks that collect trash, recycling, yard waste, and then the compost crew truck would be truck number four. And so, so this is essentially going from four trucks to three. So that's where that point comes from. So the popular drop-off composting program at City Hall will remain. That won't change as part of this proposal. So on slide 11, it's a kind of breakdown of where we come up with the incremental new cost to do the organics recycling cart of $51,000. A component of that is to kind of amortize the cost of the cart purchases over five years. So after five years, that portion of the cost will be covered and will go away. For slide 12, so provided the council authorizes us to move forward with this program at the meeting in September, we would immediately start outreach and communications. We would be soliciting feedback from customers if they want to opt out or request a smaller organics cart in the September to October timeframe. We'll come back to you all in October for both a budget amendment and contract authorization for the expanded ADS contract. We split the cart ordering into two phases to try and make sure we don't end up with either too many carts or not enough. So to see how the first kind of phases of the city goes, and then follow up with another order to kind of finish that off. And we would keep the compost crew curbside services, the city's portion of that payment kind of in place through the end of June. So on slide 13, the yellow stickers, we were recommending that we maintain this program. So, you know, a lot of kind of, particularly yard debris here in the city is kind of cyclical in nature, and so, you know, on a weekly basis, the organics cart might take care of what you need, but there'll be times of the year where, where folks have more. And that program's also used for excess trash, so this is kind of the heart of kind of a pay-as-you-throw concept, and the city sold 27,628 of these yellow stickers in fiscal year 25. Slide 14 on billing, we're recommending the real estate tax bills we've kind of talked about before. The team is actively working with our, the city's IT provider to set up the bill to be able to handle this fee should we choose to adopt it. The bills have to go out by November 1, and to do that, we've got to finalize the details on bills by mid-September. This is the primary reason we've talked about, like, that for, for this year's fees, that we would have to kind of go with the cart sizes that customers already have, and any changes that would affect the fees would take place in FY '27. I think we've kind of laid out several scenarios on how to kind of communicate with 3,107 customers through different methods, be able to answer any questions, get that feedback from them, turn that around and incorporate that into the bills. We just don't have enough time. So communication, we've covered, I think, quite a bit, I think, appreciate everybody's help kind of collectively from the task force members, our OCOM office and staff kind of from across different departments to get the communication word out this summer. For implementation, we're pursuing a kind of multifaceted communication plan using all the tools available here for the city. We will also be including instructional materials with the carts as they get deployed in the spring. So we'll skip over that one and go to slide 18. So we've talked about the fall budget amendment, you know, has three components, so the organics cart purchase, we need, you know, funding from the capital reserves to be able to front the money to buy the carts, and we'll pay that back through the, through the fee over the next five years. Some program transition costs with the contract overlap that we was talking about a little bit earlier, as well as the solid waste fee relief. So our estimate of the total of those three things is $191,500. So kind of a summary of where we're at, we're recommending a two-tier fee based on refuse trash cart sizes, providing elderly and elderly-disabled low-income relief through the real estate tax program, rolling out a new organics cart for both yard and food waste, handling the billing through the real estate tax bill, and an implementation of all of these changes will require a strong communications campaign throughout fiscal year '26. So with that, happy to dive into more details, answer any questions you all have.
Great, thank you, Mr. Young. In work session last week, we all expressed appreciation for all the work that staff did, as well as the solid waste task force, some of which had joined us last week. So we know that this was complicated, and we, many of us, I think, either joined our meetings in person or watched the recordings, and we appreciated how thoughtful and how much care you all gave to the conversation and all the details that you had to talk through. So thank you for that. Start off with that. Do we have questions or comments for Mr. Young or others? Ms. Conley?
This is a question I don't think we've asked yet, and it's just related to the American disposal contract. How long that contract has an expiration date, right? When's the next time we have to rebid that contract?
I don't know that one off the top of my head.
Okay.
We'll get back to you on it.
Okay, because it seems like that could change things, too. If we have to rebid that contract in five years and the price has changed, then that changes all this, all these calculations as well?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be true, kind of, whether it's in three years or five years.
Right.
You know.
But I just think, as we're talking about, because we keep saying, well, the tipping fees are gonna change, and this is gonna change in two years, and, but the actual contract that we're bidding will also eventually change.
Correct.
Right, correct, okay. But we don't, but it's...
The fee, it'll be assessed every year, just like stormwater, you know, so it'll get...
Right, no, no.
And then I'll have to incorporate whatever the costs of that contract are.
Right. But all of our estimates are just based upon this current contract and when this current contract changes.
And specifically for this fiscal year?
Right.
Right, as opposed to what the costs will look like for FY '27?
Okay. And then my second question is, what does the rollout look like? So if this passes, we're gonna do a big publicity campaign immediately, and then when will we be notifying people that they can change their cart size for the following year? And will that, will that happen right away? And will, I think the message that Mr. Shields sent this week said, any changes wouldn't happen until the 2026, December 2026 billing, but when will people have to make those decisions?
So, so we plan to start soliciting input from customers on the new organics cart deployment in September and October. What we've talked about is, as part of that communication effort and that kind of associated survey and information we'd sent out, we'd also start collecting input from customers at that time about changing their cart size for FY '27. And it requires some nuances of, of the timing of that and explanation in the communication, but those requested changes will inform the process of setting the fee for FY '27 as part of the spring budget process. Part of a two-tier fee is, you kind of gotta know how many of each of the carts you got to be able to set the fee.
So that's gonna have to come pretty quickly on the heels of this implementation of the first part.
So I think, you know, what we've talked about is doing the communication and soliciting that input at the same time.
And then my request is that, when this happens, if this happens, could we give priority to the people who are in, the ones that are being affected the most? So that might be smaller townhouses where we are, we're talking about equity and people are concerned about those people paying more, so can we give priority to allowing them to get in first to get a 35-gallon bin if they don't have one already?
So make sure I understand what you mean by priority, right? So the, the real estate, or the fee change would only happen in the next fiscal year, but as far as just getting the actual bin, could we prioritize townhomes? Is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking, right. Either getting the new bins, or as we're talking about how, how things may change, depending upon how many people take a 35-gallon bin versus 60-gallon bin, and that changes the fees, and, you know, all the things that will change next year, can we prioritize the people that are the most affected this time around, having first say on if they would like a 35-gallon, a change to a 35-gallon bin?
So I think so. So I, the, the fee part would change for everybody all at the same time, and so then if it's just a matter of getting the, if 100 people have asked for carts and there are 10 folks most affected, I think, as you're saying, do we try and get the bins to those 10 people first? I think we can work on that, yes.
But even just, we're saying that if everyone switches to a 35-gallon bin, then the 35-gallon bin cost is gonna go up, because everyone is gonna have a 35-gallon bin. So we want to make sure that the people that are the most affected are the first ones able to get a 35-gallon bin.
I think I...
You think you understand? We can talk about it further, but I just want to put that out there, that I just want to make sure that the people that are the most affected are not then told next year, oh, sorry, you didn't get your message to us in time, you still are stuck with a 60-gallon bin.
So I think that gets into, like, how we solicit that input, what timeframe we give people, and, and I think we can be flexible and work on that. I think, I think we understand with kind of all the changes with this, this first year, it's gonna take some time to work through everything and be, you know, incumbent on staff to kind of work with, you know, our 3,107 customers to try and get it right.
And it's gonna change, but then it will change again, and it will change again, so it's not gonna be, as Ms. Siskud said, we're gonna change it every year, so this program will keep evolving. It's not just gonna be a flat fee that...
Never changes, that's correct.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
If I could just piggyback on that, so I think obviously the coordinator... If I could just piggyback on that, so I think obviously coordinating the details of the first year is obviously really important, because as you go through the transition, it'll be a little bumpy. But I think if behavior changes the way we hope, right? So we give everybody the third bin, people start shifting and having less waste in their main trash and putting in compost, hopefully over time, you'll actually see that people continue to ask actually for it to go down to 35-gallon. And so being prepared for those future year changes and making sure that process is easy for people and be able to get the, then the lower fee. So I just wanted to make sure we were thinking ahead, too, not just for this first year rollout, but in order to actually drive the right behaviors, we actually want people to say, oh, gosh, because you gave me this third bin, I put way less trash in my main trash can. Now, I only need to drag it out once a week, I'm ready to go down to 35-gallon. And so I want to make sure that we, the communication campaign doesn't end after year one, that we continue to remind people that, hey, are you actually using your full trash can or not? If you're not, you can actually go down to smaller bins, you pay less, and actually continue to promote it so that, just because, if we do adopt it, just because we do it year one, that it continues to be a behavior change we seek every year.
So I think some of what we've talked about is having a kind of, an annual kind of enrollment window, like your insurance or something, right? And so for, you know, two months, we'd have a communication and education campaign to reach out to folks, and are you still happy with your 65-gallon bin, or do you want to switch? Here's our projection of what the fee might be, here's some resources if you haven't tried compost. I mean, I think we can make it an annual thing. We don't want to get into every week, we're working through changes of folks, so it's just trying to find that balance of-
I like open enrollment for trash.
Yep.
Cool. Yeah, open enrollment period, so that people can make that decision. Ms. Andrew Hill?
Thank you so much for this presentation. I spent a lot of this weekend talking to people a lot about trash. And I spoke with some people in Winter Hill, as well as people on the solid waste task force. But specifically, there were some asks that came out of the discussion that I had with the people in Winter Hill. And so I'd just like to go through the three asks. There's more, but I'm going to consolidate it down to the three main ones. The first one is something that I discussed with Sally, but I'd like to at least have this in public. So one of the asks was, we'd collect a fee for trash, but then we would give a rebate to every single property owner in the city, and it would be a flat rebate rather than one based on property values. And the purpose of that would be to not have a regressive, I guess, anytime you reduce the tax rate, it is a regressive system, because when you increase taxes, it is progressive. So anytime we cut taxes, people with higher home values tend to benefit more. So giving a flat credit was one of the asks, and if you could just talk about, like, is that legal? Is that something that we can do?
Well, there's, there's no authority on point to do what you're discussing. So then the question becomes, is that proposal a rational way to return monies to people who have, when we have received that money through the tax system? And in my opinion, that rebate process would lack a rational, a rational connection to a rational relationship to the way that money was generated. So we would be receiving the money through tax revenues that are generated through percentages on property value, so that people with the highest values are contributing the most, and people with the least values are contributing the least. And then we would in turn be taking that in and returning it in a flat form with the same amount being given to each taxpayer, if I understand the scenario correctly. And I, I do not think that is, I worry that that's not defensible.
The other two asks included to not give a tax cut at all, or to give a smaller tax cut, so rather than giving a 1.5 cent decrease, give a 1 cent decrease, because that would then make the differential between large homes and small homes smaller. And then the third ask was to have a greater differential between the costs of the two carts. So to have the smaller cart, the 35-gallon cart, have a lower cost than the, even larger of a lower cost than the 65-gallon cart. And so would that be possible? Like, I know that the task force had looked at an option that actually incentivized people to get the 35-gallon bin, and so I'm wondering if there are prices that we could look at tonight that could greater incentivize people to go to the 35-gallon cart?
So I think technically, yes. Like, if that's something council wanted to look at. I mean, as you mentioned, the task force looked at an option like that. I think the option we were looking at on the task force was a $150 difference, right? And I think we talked about two, two kind of challenges that gave the task force pause on that. One was kind of being able to tie it back rationally to the costs that were incurring, right? Because a lot of the program is, like, the costs are incurred if you stop at your house or not, right?
Yeah.
And does that raise other equity? Quite, you know, there's an equity challenge on this from every angle you can think of. I think the other piece we talked about was, you know, a little bit of concern of, like, do we start to see folks game the system, right? And get the 35-gallon bin and then just have five bags of trash out every week, or whatever, instead? And so, so that's kind of, those are the reasons, I think, that were talked about on the task force and why we landed on the recommendation we did. But I think if the council wanted to look at a few other options, we could put a few up on the screen for you all to talk about.
I would be interested just to see some other options, and understanding that this is not something that is set in stone for the next 100 years. This is something that, if we do notice some issues, or we want to change the incentive structure, whatever else, we can change the tax, excuse me, we can change the fee structure next year or in the coming years if we deem there to be issues with people gaming the system or whatever else.
And I would offer, you can also think about that as, you know-
You can change it as well, yes.
Incrementally growing towards that by starting with kind of what's been proposed and getting more ambitious with it in the future, right? I think trying to find the balance of how much change we're pushing, you know, and the effects of that is, you know, it's something we've thought about, right? So-
I guess for the benefit of the public and also for council, because the new two-tier fee is different than what we talked about in work session. The new fee proposed is 292 for the 35-gallon, and then the 327 annually for the large ones. Could you again repeat why we have a difference of those, or how that's explained? Before we talk about other options and changing the fee?
So, yeah, so, Taya, can we go to slide 7, please? So the, so the way we've kind of allocated costs on the, between the two different cart sizes, this, well, hold on a second, did I? How about, how about go to slide 5? Maybe that's a better one. So when we look at the program costs that we're including in kind of the version tonight, right, of just over $1 million, the curbside collection fee, and then the fees associating with composting, kind of are attributed to all 3,107 customers. The curbside collection fee that the city pays, which is the kind of the biggest cost component of the program, is per stop. So we pay, if we add more stops, we pay more money. So that's a flat fee, no matter how much trash that you throw away. The piece that's variable in our analysis is the tipping fees. So that's the amount that the hauler pays at the different disposal facilities that the trash and recycling and yard waste and like are disposed here in the city. And so, so what, kind of what we did was, we took that 210,000 and then did some math to kind of, you know, figure out the size of all the bins across all 3,107 customers and kind of proportionally allocated that cost. And so, so that's the variable cost that creates the difference between the 35-gallon and 65-gallon bins. Maybe, Taya, can we go to slide 21?
Yeah. Sorry. Where, I don't currently compost, I'm embarrassed to admit, but I don't know what current composters are paying in fees. I know, I know our $90,000 is subsidizing that, so it's a lower fee, but I don't know what that cost for that is per month. Where is that reflected in what we'd then be absorbing in our fees? Right? So Mary Beth compost, you pay $20 a month, or I don't know what it is, per month, but some nominal amount, our costs show that 90,000, but we'll be absorbing the cost of Mary Beth.
I want to say it was like $15 a month, if I remember correctly, and there was two options, I think, but-
Where's that cost reflected? I'm sure I'm dismissing it.
I was, like, we've had so many different versions of the deck. So I want to say that the cost of kind of all of the fees that all of the users of the compost crew are paying today is something around $80,000. And so the 90 plus the 80 is around 170,000, and that's what the city kind of is paying between residents and the city itself to deliver the current program. And it's part of what's made the third bin kind of an attractive option is, like, incrementally, it's almost kind of less expensive to give it to all 3,107 households as opposed to just the 580 that are getting it today.
And I guess for those 580 people, if you're paying $15 a month times 12, you're no longer having to pay that fee, because you're going to get the service as part of your 292 or 327 per year.
That's correct.
So we've talked about that.
It's currently going directly to the composting crew, not to the city. And the next bill will, the city will be paying for it all. So I just wanted to make sure I personally understood where it got reflected in the cost structure.
So the costs that we've kind of reflected in, oh, there we go.
There we go, thank you.
Nice job. So, yeah, so the customers, it's $96 a year if you've got the seven-gallon bucket. We don't really like the seven-gallon bucket in our house, we use the 12-gallon, lid's easier to use. $96 and $180 a year is what folks are paying for those two.
So that total program cost of $170,000, when you go back to that prior chart of the cost of the program, I saw $90,000, which is a subsidy. If you go back to that last chart, page 5. So I see the $90,000 on the solid waste program costs. When we adding in the organics, I see that cart implementation is 51,000, whereas the additional 80,000 reflected, is that distributed amongst the tipping fees and the curbside collection fees?
So the, so this is all set up to reflect the costs to the city, and so the 80,000 isn't something the city is paying today, so we didn't include it.
But it will be paying for it going forward, so are we covering that in the fees? Or just doing absorb?
The 80,000 is what customers pay to compost crew, they no longer have to pay for that in the new model. So in the new way of doing it, it would be included as part of our service that we get from American Disposal.
Slide 11?
That's why it's cheaper overall, like, it's cheaper to serve 3,000 customers across the city and give them composting than to continue subsidizing 500-some people for-
So you're saying it's $80,000 cheaper to go to 3,000, it's just going to net out to exactly nothing?
So the way we've looked at the city costs, right? So on slide 11, so the, the organic cart collection fee that, above kind of what the city's kind of paying for yard waste collections today is $95,000. The tipping fee estimate that we've come up with to take all that compost that's currently going to compost crew and tip it at Convertus, we estimate that to be $10,000. The cart purchase over five years is 36,000 a year, which means the total program cost for the city that we're estimating for the organics bin is $141,000. We're already paying a subsidy that we wouldn't pay anymore, so you subtract off that 90 that we're paying for the subsidy today, which means your net new cost to the city to provide the service to all 3,107 customers is $51,000.
So that ties back to the last line item, which is reflective of all of that. Okay.
And then, and then for me, if I'm paying $96 a year, you know, my taxes will go down, my trash fee will go up, but my compost fee will go down, too. So there's 500 people who will also-
See that benefit.
Have their compost fee reduced $96 or-
Or $180 if you're paying for the big truck.
Yeah, right.
Correct. Like, there almost needs to be another column for impact, because for the 500, however many people that use compost crew, they don't have to pay 96 or $180 anymore. We haven't talked about that population.
That would be clear. Thank you. Sorry to slow things down, I just wanted to see how that tied back into, because I thought we were saying 51,000 was the cost of just the cart purchase and the new tipping fees.
But going back to the 292 and the 327, if I understood this correctly, two-thirds of the costs, two-thirds of the 1 million is flat, so regardless of whether you have big bin, little bin, townhouse, single-family home, that's mostly fixed costs.
Correct.
And then the difference between 292 versus 327, so the 30 bucks or so, is really the variable, like, how much trash you create.
And we're, and we're making assumptions, right, based on the cart size. You could have a 65-gallon cart that you don't fill up, right, but, but as far as the capacity that you have-
It's the proxy for how much trash.
That's, that's the proxy we used, yes.
Okay. And so the question, I think, that Justine was entertaining is, could we have a bigger difference between the two? Didn't either both encourage more people to use 35-gallon, which is what the task force did look at? What was, how big of a delta was there?
So I think the scenario we looked at during the task force was $150. And it was kind of arbitrary to just try and pick something that was significant enough that might drive behavior change. Now, like, council could decide kind of to set that, you know, anywhere you want. I mean, you know, for the, I think the challenges I talked about earlier, right, you know, with little bit of concern about kind of the secondary effects of kind of more stickers and bags on the street and that kind of thing, I think also predicting kind of that shift and kind of what that looks like is an added challenge that we would need to work through.
I guess before we talk about numbers, I guess I have a question for Ms. Gillett. Given what you said earlier about needing a rational relationship between what we charge, if we did want a bigger separation, so given what we now understand is how we arrived at 292 versus 327, that two-thirds of it's fixed, the 30-some dollar difference is really the variable cost, how would we explain a bigger difference then? Does that pass that legal test?
Well, that is, that's an issue. The, the general rule of law is that the, the fee has to be reasonably related to the cost to provide the service. I would look into it just a little more to see if there's room, there's room in that rule to accommodate the public objective, in the sense that if the program is designed to minimize waste, can that component of the program be factored into the fee structure when, influence the fees even when that's not directly connected to the cost of the service? I can look into that question and give everyone an answer on that.
So I think I raised this during the work session, and I support a larger differential, because to me, it's counterintuitive that if you only have a $35 difference between a 35-gallon bin and a 65-gallon bin, let's say you divide, you know, that $35 over 52 weeks of service, it means that really there's only a 67-cent difference per week of having a 35-gallon bin versus a 65-gallon bin. So for the person who has the 35-gallon cart, and on the off week, they decide to like put out the extra bag of trash that costs them a dollar, they're actually paying larger, right? They're paying more for, for like 35-gallon plus one bag versus the person who has the like 65-gallon cart on a regular basis. So to me, it actually makes more sense to like increase the differential to account for like the additional bags that people would be putting out, if that makes sense, so that the cost would at least be, you know, $52 higher, but could be up to, let's say, like $100 higher to account for the fact that you're putting out like the equivalent of two, two stickers less worth of bags over the course of each week, over the course of the entire year. So I actually do think it's like more rationally related to your generation of trash, to the extent we have stickers still in the equation, than it is to just say it's $35 difference, and if you happen to put out a bag, you, in that week, are paying more than the person who has the 65-gallon bin.
Mr. Snyder?
Mr. Love, Madam Mayor, I want to follow up on the comments that have just been made. So tonight, we heard a dozen or so citizens, both in person and writing, raised equity issues. We've had the Environmental Services Council recommending a greater differential, and certainly a differential would go partway in resolving- And certainly a differential would go partway in resolving the equity issues. And we've even had speakers from the multifamily houses saying that they're concerned about the other equity issues that could be raised. And I think Councilmember Flynn has laid out a technical justification for that. So I think we need to move to scenario two or three, and we'll support that.
So Councilmember Snyder is talking about what we've kind of got up on the screen.
And I would say we have to go back to the policy basis for making these changes. And the policy basis is to move toward a pay as you throw approach, as well as to provide additional composting services, both of which are environmentally based. And if we do that, it seems to me that justifies a more significant differential.
I would also like to, I've been running some numbers. With scenario three, it really does bring the lower value house with a 35 gallon bin a lot closer to the, what the larger value house with the 65 gallon bin would be paying. So that sort of evens things out a lot more. And now the differential between those two is far less.
Laura, thank you for being patient, Ms. Downs.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Thank you. Yeah, just to jump on, I agree with that. When you look at the, you know, just very simple math and you're looking at the 35 gallon versus a 65, well, some would say, well, that's almost, right, half, not quite half. And so it's, you would think that then the cost would be half. So you'd think that, oh, well, then 35 gallon is almost half. It's, you know, a double would be 70, of course, so it's not quite half. But you'd think it would be closer to like a $165 range, that it would be more like, you know, and then you would double it to get to the 65 gallon. So I, you know, that just seems like just, I'm very much simplifying that math there, but that's sort of how I look at it too. So I would definitely be interested in looking at more of a differential there as well. And then the other piece, which is not to discuss tonight, but I wanted to see if we could maybe put it on a work session agenda, is to talk about CNI. One of the speakers brought it up this evening. And, you know, the, our commercial entities will receive a tax break. And I know, you know, I'm newer to council, but I understand that this is something that's been sort of discussed for years. We don't charge it to our businesses, most other localities do. And is this the time to start thinking about that with them receiving this reduction in the tax rate because of, if we go ahead with this trash proposal? So I'd just like to put that on a future agenda for discussion. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Young, do you want to walk through the different scenarios? Or are they just numbers that we, like the scenario two and three?
So, yeah, so the calculation on the left just shows like the, how we came up with the gallons and split up the costs. So that's the proposal that was kind of being shared with you all this evening. And so then, okay, if we were going to do something greater than 35, we just picked a couple. But I think, you know, we could kind of play with the numbers to kind of land on the differential that y'all thought made the most sense. But we picked 60 and $100. So you can see kind of how the, the big driver is the number of customers, right? And so again, like if we get a bunch of shift to 35 gallons, it, you know, next year makes the math a little different and a little trickier, right? But you've got roughly five times as many, five or six times as many 65 gallon customers as 35 gallon customers. So the, so the impact on the 65 gallon customers is like $1 for every $5 or so that we've reduced the 35 gallon number. So you can kind of see that. So the, you increase the delta from 35 to $60, but the, the fee for 65 gallon customer only goes up $4, right? So it's, it's spread out over more people, so it isn't as impacted. I'm not, I don't feel like that's...
I guess given that we...
It's kind of rolling off the tongue, but like, I think you all get it.
Yep. I guess a question for, back to Sally then. So given the guidance you shared with us that you need to give some thought to this, I guess, how would we do this at first reading if we wanted to go to the lower number? Or do we need to wait for your legal review of whether $100 difference between the two is defensible, when only 30 some dollars of it is really explained by the variable cost?
Well, it probably is easier to begin with a higher number, the higher differential, and work, and if it's not defensible, kind of work your way backwards to the more equalized differential than it is to start with a more equalized differential and then allow later that, those numbers to diverge in a greater way. So if you wanted to make a decision tonight without further input, then I would start with the larger differential. And we can check before your next meeting that there's a defense for that. And if there is, we leave it, you can leave it that way if that's your choice. And if there's not, then the question would be if going to the $35 differential, the one that's clearly justified, if that's necessary, is that a substantive change to the ordinance? And, and you just have to kind of think about that question and decide what, you know, what a reasonable person would, would think. And I would say, you know, to me, that seems like a non-substantive, non-substantive change when you're starting at the higher differential to move your way close, those numbers closer.
I guess for the public, is it the differential that matters? Or is it the total cost per customer that should start higher and then the impact is lower, I guess? The general rule of thumb for budgets has been like, you advertise at a higher rate and you can come down? So are we...
I see. So the greater differential is the lower, the lower the cost for the 35 gallon customers. And that number would increase. And you're thinking that would be the better starting point so that in the future, the...
I think it should be the net dollar amount, right? Because that's like you're setting the tax rate, you're setting the fee, and you can go down from the fee, but you can't go up from what you set the fee at, from first reading to second reading.
So the 292 and 327.
That's the logic that I think of when I'm comparing the, like, you know, with stormwater fees, for instance, you set it and you can't, you can go down, but you can't go up from first reading to second reading.
So if we follow kind of where Councilmember Flynn was going earlier about the $1 bag fees. And so if you, so like the difference kind of between a 35 gallon and a 65 gallon bin on a weekly basis is around two bags of trash, right? And so two bags at a dollar a piece, 52 weeks in a year, sounds really close to $100, right? Like, so maybe that's, they're working another kind of scenario here, but maybe that's a way to kind of build the justification that's defensible.
I mean, I guess the other question is, maybe back to Sally's, how big of a risk is this? Do we feel comfortable just going with the $100 differential if we don't, if we think it is pretty defensible? And is that a risk that council is willing to take? Or do we want to be conservative and advertise the 292 slash 327, knowing that we can come down at second reading after we've had a more thorough legal review?
But you'd be, one would be going down, one would be going up.
You'd advertise the higher of the two.
I mean, you'd have to advertise the higher of the two and then make the decision on going down.
Higher for the two. Yeah, for both. Looks like the city attorney and city manager are conferring.
So I think you might have said this as well, but we're talking about using a blended approach where you advertise the 336 for the 65 gallon and the 292 for the 35 gallon, and then we can go down from there for either.
The higher for both items and then be able to come down.
For both.
I think that's what Debbie just said.
Yeah. Sorry, I was hearing it at the same time over here.
That follows the principle with budgets, right? Where you start at the higher impact to the taxpayer and then be able to come down at second reading?
The standard for this, for first reading to second reading is different than tax rates. The standard is, is there a substantive amendment to the ordinance? And so the question is, is it, is the change substantive? And that's, you know, there's room for judgment there. And so a difference, you know, in one way, and it would be really nice if we fleshed this out as a city, maybe a little more, this word substantive, it's our own rule. If we flushed out, fleshed out a little bit more what we mean by substantive, so that we're not wondering ourselves what, what to do. But for now, we have what we have. And in my mind, substantive can be qualitative, quantitative, or both. I tend to think of a substantive change as one that could not be, this is my interpretation, this is not the law, but my interpretation would be, it's one that would not be expected or anticipated by the public who has been monitoring this discussion. And it would catch them by surprise, they couldn't have fore, they really wouldn't have foreseen it. To me, that's what a substantive amendment would, would look like. And in this case, you know, quantitatively, in neither scenario, scenario are we talking about really large dollar numbers, even if we do change it. So there is a judgment call there. Is that substantive or not substantive? Reasonable people might disagree. So there's, so that's the issue. If you propose an ordinance on first reading that's dealing with trash collection, and at second reading, you develop an ordinance that's dealing with, you know, a lawn, something unrelated or, you know, marginally related, that's very substantive. That's a, it's an idea that is new and unexpected. Whereas these are grades of different, you know, these are, this is a gradual gradient difference of the same idea, no new ideas, it's just the numbers are altering a little bit. Generally speaking, to me, that's not substantive. But that is, again, my opinion, not the law. So what, I guess as a city, I would recommend is maybe we refine our language in the city code a little more to, so that we're not dealing with the word substantive. And then secondly, for this case, maybe advertise both at the highest and we can come down.
Or can we, excuse me, Madam Mayor, can we offer two options?
We could do that. First reading would be a first reading of two alternatives instead of just one.
Of a 292 and 327, or the 236 and 336.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think that's less confusing.
Okay.
It'd be confusing to people to have this one, now we're going to move this one up and this one down.
Right.
I just wanted to repeat a point so that Sally heard it, which was that we were discussing that the difference between the 35 gallon bin and the 65 gallon bin is really two trash bags. And if you were to put two trash bags out every single week for the entire year, that would add up to about $100. So that could be one potential justification. But as, as you look into whether or not the $100 is justified.
Thank you for that.
That is useful.
Okay. So it sounds like, sorry, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, there's, looking back at the timing of this, just trying to understand, so people will see this on their tax bill in December, and that covers fiscal year '26, but they won't receive, they may not receive composting services until July of '27. Is that correct? Like if you look at the calendar of the rollout, there are some rollout that's not going to happen until June of '26. Completion of compost, I guess that's May. So the deployment of carts goes through June of 2026?
Correct.
So when someone asks, why am I paying a new fee for composting and I won't be composting in the same fiscal year? But what's my answer? I've been asked that. So what's the appropriate answer?
The fees for solid waste services generally, and the compost cart is coming. And you'll, you know, some will get it as soon as, you know, that first round, which will be rolling out in that February, March timeframe, and the last tranche will be in that May-June timeframe. So the shorter answer is that this is a fee really for solid waste services generally.
Okay.
And we'll strive to kind of orderly deploy all this and get the city stood up as quickly as, you know, as practical, right? So if we can do better than May and June, we would. But I think trying to be realistic about kind of working through this and all the associated changes, we've been deliberate about kind of having a phased strategy that will take most of the spring to be able to accomplish.
Mary Beth?
This is a question, and maybe Ms. Calvatrinos might need to answer it. Is this going to be put on just the December bills? Or will it be split between the December and the June bills?
We create the bill for the entire fiscal year, so it would be billed in two installments.
Okay. So what people will see? $150. $200. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, not to further complicate things, but is it possible for people that now have the 65 gallon bins to indicate that they want the 35 gallon bin and therefore get a credit on their November tax bills?
And so we're, it does sound complicated.
What's that?
That sounds complicated. So I guess maybe one way to think about this is, you know, we're stretching ourselves as small jurisdiction to offer the tiered. I think it's pretty great that we're doing the tiered option. And the bad news is it's going to take us a full year for people to be able to make that switch. But I think it's a, I'd say this is a win that we're able to have the tiered, which even Fairfax County, you know, the big guys are not able to pull that off. So maybe I'll just, maybe focus on the positive.
I think when we did the benchmarking, we were the only one that offered the tiered.
Right.
Right? I think everyone had a flat fee across the board, so, which is, I think originally when we talked about this in October, it seemed like the easiest implement. And so I do think it is ambitious to try to get to this tiering and how you transition people. But do you know that it better helps us meet our policy objectives? So appreciate staff thinking through the complexities.
So I take it that the answer to my technical question was a simple no? Is that, is that what I heard?
My apologies, I should have been simpler. Yes, no.
Wait, yes, no?
If I might, Madam Mayor, this is not just about an administrative change. It does go to the credibility of the council and equity issues in the community, so, and larger, larger issues of appropriately and environmentally improving things. So, yeah, it is technical, it is administrative, but it's much more.
And it's a core government service. This is, this is, solid waste is a service we take very seriously. It touches so many members of the community, and we want to do it well.
Can I ask a question that's a follow up to Dave's question on the timing of having a two-tier structure, but not actually allowing people to have any choices to which tier they're in? So basically, you know, we're saying it's a two-tier structure. If you have 35, it's this. If you have 65, it's that. But the communications piece, in my mind, not, like, is the fee is 65 gallons, it's this, unless you happen to have a 35 gallon bin right now, in which case you're going to pay this. And next year, you can opt into having the lower price structure by getting the smaller bin, right? So it isn't like to sort of present it as an option of 35 and 65 isn't totally true.
Your option is to choose for fiscal year '27.
Yeah, and get charged, you know, the higher rate because you happen to have a bigger bin, even if you're only throwing out one bag of trash each week. So it, so to me, I'm, you know, I had before raised, I'm a proponent of composting. I will support a move to a composting sort of system if I think it can be implemented well. I already have concerns that, as Ms. Hiscott said, we are saying at the earliest, you're sort of six months from now before you're composting, and everyone's sort of paying a composting fee for a service that we know we're not going to provide or not everyone is going to be able to take advantage of this year. So getting back to the differentials as to the trash carts, how much of the difficulty of accommodating people's choice, so to speak, for a 35 gallon So getting back to the differentials as to the trash carts, how much of the difficulty of accommodating people's choice, so to speak, for a 35 gallon cart or a 65 gallon cart is complicated by the rollout of the organics cart from the outset, as opposed to dealing with the sort of trash carts initially, and then, and then figuring out or having this further conversation about like what the composting program should look like, because we already know some places like don't even use a 35 gallon cart for trash and are using stickers or bags. And so like, is it realistic to think they're going to suddenly have like storage space for a organics bin at all? And yet, all of these service costs are still being imposed on people, even though I get why we are making the choice sort of community-wide. So, so, so my interest was sort of just like, if we, if we know we're on delayed implementation from composting now, does it simplify the trash issue to be able to focus on that and then add in the composting piece later?
I think the time, the time window constraint is the same regardless. So, so I think as we've kind of turned this over, kind of with the bigger team, right, you have from September 8th till the bills go out at the last week of November, or the last week of October, right? To communicate with 3,107 customers in all the different ways that they communicate with the city, explain what's going on, collect their feedback, filter that all back through, make adjustments to kind of our tax billing system, kind of troubleshoot that, make sure that's all correct, and then get the bills out on time to everybody as we've kind of worked through kind of all the steps you got to go through to do that. We just don't think there's time to do it appropriately. So I don't, I don't think it's tied in or related to the comp or the organics cart at all. It's another thing to do, right? And, you know, but, but when we've kind of looked at that, we've just looked at it from a standpoint of just that, how many, how many days do you have to kind of be able to do that? How much time do you give people to think about it? How do, you know, some people will be fine scanning a QR code and going online and putting in their interest, but we'll have a subset of houses that'll want to mail something back or, or, you know, provide their input in other ways. And so I just don't think there's time to be able to do that effectively. And then we'll, and then we'll have concerns with kind of customers being kind of upset with us that we didn't give enough time, you know? So that's, that's some of the discussion that we've had.
So I understand the concern that, you know, realistically, people don't get to compost until six months from now, and people don't get to see the lower cost of a 35 gallon cart till next year's tax bill. These are all kind of like seam transition issues, right? Because the right policy decision is still trying to get to the pay-as-you-throw model, offer a third bin. Obviously, they're important to work through the seams, right? Because that's clunky, and we want to make sure it's a good experience for customers, and we're being fair to our taxpayers. But again, I want to encourage us to think about like, what is the right policy decision we want to get to, to get to the right behavior change? And then how do we navigate that over the 12 to 18 months? But it sounds like we have gotten to consensus that we do want to get to a place where we want to offer a third bin to people, because we know that that is better for the environment, it meets a longstanding goal, we've had to shift behaviors. We want to address the fairness issue we've had for the 4,000 people in the city who pay for a service that don't get it. I think I'm hearing a large part of the concerns now is, gosh, it doesn't feel great to obviously pay for something that you're not going to see until next year, or the transition's going to take six months to do. I hear all that, but I think I want to make sure that we think back to, again, the original goals of what we are charged to do, which is make a shift in our solid waste, you know, plan, and actually address a fairness issue that has been in front of this council, at least since last October, and then for some people, 35 years.
And one other observation, the compost, the expansion of the compost program is 5% of the cost that we're talking about. So in our communication, we're not going to try to make it seem like composting is really the reason for the fee. The fee is driven by our solid waste program generally. The composting is a, is a very affordable, given already our commitments on composting. The expansion of it is 5% of the total.
But I do think we should- That's the number I was looking for. And back to the question I was asking you about the explanation back to people and about the timing, I think that 5% is a really key number in terms of communicating that back out to the communities as well. Were you going to add to that? I have one other comment that's about communicating.
No, I was going to just add on slide 12. It says opting in or out of the organics cart does not change the household fee. So that's the other piece of it, is that we, no matter when you get it, whether you get it or not, your fee will still be the same, whatever it is we set it up.
Can I, I just don't, sorry, I don't understand how the composting is only 5% of the fee. Isn't, based on the other slide, the composting $141,000 of a million, essentially a million one?
Well, the expansion of the program is 51,000. That's why I'm saying 5%.
Okay, I think it's like 14% of what the fee is to the customer or something, right? Like, I just mean in terms of, I mean, I guess I'm saying, I'm not sure, like, I want to support composting, but I'm not quite sure on the implementation of the composting program. I don't think that 3,100 households are going to have space for a 35 gallon bin. Right now, we have X number of households that don't have space for one 35 gallon bin, never mind three 35 gallon bins. And so, you know, does it make sense to have a composting program, you know, three bins in single-family homes, but not have three bins in townhomes, but have some sort of shared bin? Does the composting program make more sense to have more shared bins than solely at the community center, than sort of having a rollout that I'm a little bit skeptical of in terms of like how it actually works for certain communities in the city?
I think we talked about how that doesn't preclude people from sharing bins. Like Winter Hill clusters could share like five bins, like not everyone needs their own, right? And so when we ask, who wants organic bin, people could opt in, like, in with their neighbors. Like, it doesn't change the cost. Like, if you don't take one for yourself, the cost is still maybe 236 or 336, right? That's what Steph is saying. But we could, and I guess maybe I should ask this as a question, could staff work with individual communities, figure out, does everyone need a bin? Or could they share some?
So I think we could target outreach to specific communities as far as, you know, working out the specific solutions to those communities. I, you know, I think it'd be dependent on those discussions.
How many people are sticker-only? Don't even take a 35 gallon? Roughly, no, sorry.
I've got the number somewhere.
Thought it was, I remember it in one of the slides. 103 out of 3,100.
Correct.
Okay.
And you, may I jump in on a different, on the communications piece? You'll be asking when it's rolled out in October, November timeframe for people to then sign up for fiscal year '27, so we'll have enough data to then make a fee decision for fiscal year '27? Because if everybody went to 35 gallon bins, then you'd have to look at the cost structure there and decide on the fee for 35 gallon bins for fiscal year '27.
That's correct. That'll allow us to kind of better plan for next fiscal year.
I guess I do want to go back to implementation and communication. So even if the cost of composting is somewhere between 5 and 10% of the total million dollars, I do think talking about it as a new service we are offering citywide is important, because it goes back to, again, our solid waste goals and our climate goals and environmental goals. If this is a new service we are adding citywide, and we're also trying to change how we are paying for solid waste. I don't want to diminish that as something we are offering to the community, even if it ends up being more cost-effective doing it this way versus the opt-in compost crew program. I think that, given what we know about our community, that will be appealing to people that we are offering it citywide.
And I think to the point on specific communities where we may run into challenges, I think, yes, we should do some more kind of engagement and work with those to not screw it up, right? I think we can do that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I do want to go back to this notion that we're charging people for composting before the service is available. Is that in fact what will happen under the proposed timetable?
So...
I mean, you technically can put out yard waste already, right? And so all we're saying is you can then throw in kitchen waste? I mean, would, could anything, I guess currently, if you were to throw in kitchen waste in with your twigs and leaves, what would happen?
I'm not disagreeing with where we're going, but do we have, are we charging for a service that we're not providing? I think that's the question.
We'd have to pay for the carts, right? So you'd have to, you're paying for those before you receive the services, so you're incurring that cost. So at least that cost is a definable incurred cost.
Okay, that's-
When does the contract start?
I'm just assuming we're going to do the composting more generally. So I think the point you're making is that in order to provide this service on, on day two, we need to charge it on day one in order to have the facilities there to provide the service on day two? Is that what you're saying?
I've been just thinking out loud-
Vice Mayor, I think that's an interesting point to make.
Because you have, when you're signing a new contract to pick up at every house, you have to define for them that you're picking up at every house, right? And you have to define how many bins you're purchasing. So there are some costs that will be incurred before the services are received.
There's a startup cost and a startup timeline associated with rolling out a new service like this. I mean, I think if, you know, we've identified some costs, you know, that we need council support in a budget amendment to, to make this work, you know, one other kind of avenue would be, do you all want, you know, subsidize more of the startup costs through, you know, a bigger budget amendment? Like, that could be a way to address the concern that's being voiced. The cost is there, right? And so like, I think we've got to cover it somehow, but like, that could be another way that council could consider to help make this work.
Help me understand this, but so realistically, the kitchen waste is just getting commingled with your yard waste, and we're giving you a third bin to put it in.
That's correct.
And people already get yard waste picked up. So that's that truck that would drive around and pick up two kinds of things instead of one kind of thing.
And that's part of, that is the main reason why the implementation of cost of this is modest when compared to the overall program.
So in terms of the service part of it, they're already driving around picking up yard waste.
Correct.
So they are, we're paying for that. And then the extra cost is really the new bin, like the container that would hold it instead of you putting out and other, you know, other things right now, we're giving you a new bin. That's that cost. So I guess, Dave, to your concern about paying for service, they're already providing us that service by picking up yard waste. There's an incremental, incremental startup cost to put in a new third bin, but they're already giving us that service today. Okay, other questions, considerations?
I guess I asked this, and this gets to your point, I asked this to Andy over email, but could you just try to determine, as the mayor's getting at, what, what types of bins, and if people can use personal bins while they're awaiting the 35 gallon cart, for example? Because right now, you know, they come around and they get your yard waste, whether you put it in your own garbage pail, or you put it in a, one of the brown paper bags. And so I guess I don't, I mean, I get that they want more visible, this is the bin of the yard waste, but it seems like someone should be able to get compost out sooner than having to wait for the bin if they need to.
So the, so the discussion we had with the, the service provider in the task force meeting about this was, you know, because we've got questions, well, hey, can I use just my smaller pail or the little 12 gallon compost crew kind of sized bin that we have today? And so the waste haulers' feedback to us was their truck equipment's set up to handle the 65 and 35 gallon bins. If you look at those, they're all set up with the same way for the machines to grab and pick them up. The guys don't always use them. You see people, you know, some of the guys just throwing the stuff in the back of a truck, but their preference and what they were kind of telling us is that, you know, they don't really want to get into the 12 gallon bins and the like, because then they run into some concerns with kind of safety issues with their staff, you know, picking up heavy things and hurting themselves. So that's what was conveyed to us. I think the other thing we thought about is like, okay, if everybody on the block has got a different container, does that start to create some confusion and missed pickups and the like? And that's why having a standard container, you know, I think from a program standpoint will work better. One of the things that they talked about kind of in the, in the task force meeting was the footprint for the 35 gallon bin is pretty much the same as the 12 gallon bin that, like I have at my house today. Like, the amount of square inches or whatever on your, on your stoop or behind your house is largely the same. And so it looks bigger because it stands taller, but, but as far as kind of footprint that you need to find a home for, it's about the same. So for what that's worth, that's what they've shared. I think this is a conversation, I think we can continue with the waste taller. I don't have a better answer for you than kind of what I've shared for tonight.
We've spent majority of time talking about the two-tiered system and different considerations about whether we want a bigger delta. We talked about composting. I'm hearing like general direction of wanting to move that way, which I think is in itself the big substantive thing, to use Sally's legal term earlier, right? That's a substantive change, is that moving away from paying for it out of taxes to a fee as staff and the task force is recommending. Are there other kind of questions, comments, considerations that we haven't talked about? We're also nearing the three-hour mark, and so if we need to take a break too. All right, Beth?
I just have a comment, and it's about the use of the word equity. And we are all doing our best to be fair and equitable. But the vice mayor's brought this up numerous times, and I just want to highlight it that the reality is, single-family homeowners and towns has been subsidized by others who don't have the service for many years. So while we are trying to make, we're trying to make it fair, we're trying to make it be the people who use the service, just like a landline telephone, or the water service, or the people who use the service are paying for the service. And whether that's $200 more here, and $60 more here, it, the equity is the people who are using the service are paying for the service. And a tax rate change, up or down, when we go, when we raise taxes, people with more expensive houses pay a larger percentage, and when we reduce taxes, they pay a lesser percentage. So I do think, I want to be fair, and I don't want to burden people unnecessarily, but it does seem like we have to keep in mind that for many, many years, that subsidy has taken place that, that no one even knew about, right? No one knew they were being subsidized, but they were. So I just think that's important, too.
So, Madam Mayor, do we need to do another public hearing? Did we do a public hearing on this? On these bills?
We haven't advertised any public hearings.
Yeah, but we can open up for public comment if we want to. This is first reading, so.
I mean, I'm willing to make a proposal. I don't know whether you want to do that first and then have a public hearing, or do the public hearing.
There's not a public hearing officially because it's first reading. We haven't advertised a public hearing, but we can open up for other public comments.
Yeah.
Do we have other, I guess, substantive things to talk about before we talk about the motion and see whether there's comments from the public? Okay, I think, Mr. Snyder, you're free to make your motion if you'd like.
I'd like to move two alternative ordinances. One with the differential in, between the 65 gallon and 35 gallon bins in the staff report, and one with a $100 difference between the $65 bin and the $35 bin. That would be scenario three.
Is that for the fee ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's for the-
Solid waste fee ordinance.
And so that would BTO 25-15. So 14, I'm sorry, 14 is amending the city code.
So 14, I'm sorry, 14 is amending the city code, which would then allow us to set the fee. So that's why that one's first.
Okay.
Just for your information, but.
And I guess there's one other point. I don't need it included in the ordinance, but we're making a policy judgment that we need to move toward pay-as-you-throw and also composting. And hopefully, those living in multifamily housing will also understand the importance of moving in that direction as well. I'll just make that comment. But, so I'd move to grant first reading to TO 25-14, schedule a public hearing in second reading for September 8, 2025, and advertise the same according to law.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's Underhill on the second. So make sure everyone's on the same page. TO 25-14 is the ordinance, and then the two options that Mr. Snyder proposed will come in TO 25-15. Okay. In call roll.
Yes. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yes.
Ms. Seanz Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you pull up then TO 25-15? Move to grant first reading to TO 25-15, schedule a public hearing in second reading for September 8, 2025, and advertise the same according to law with two options for fees, the one being, and maybe we need to put the numbers here, $292 per year for a 35 gallon refuse cart and $327 per year for a 65 gallon refuse cart. And what would be the numbers for the $100 difference?
It's 236 and 336, I recall. Is that correct, Steph?
236 and 336.
That's correct.
236. 336. Oh, the $100 one. Okay.
Yeah.
I got that. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
It's Underhill on the second again. Call roll.
Thank you. Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Seanz Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
And thank you. Could you read that, Madam Clerk? Would you be able to read that back, what carried, please?
I can't read it back verbatim, but it was the original motion with two options for fees, $292 for a 35 gallon refuse cart and $327 for a 65 gallon refuse cart. And second option, $236 for a 35 gallon refuse cart and $336 for a 65 gallon refuse cart.
Okay, with such decision to be made upon second reading?
Yeah.
Very good.
Yes.
So you've kind of amended the motion, or you said?
Right. Our rules say that we record verbatim motions, so I don't know where that leaves us.
Do we need to vote again?
Yeah, we, sorry, a lot going on at the same time, but we're trying to craft it so that it kind of meets the standards of the ordinance approval process while also building in this flexibility, which is not typically done. And so, so you, the language that just got passed is, will be in the ordinance. So it'd say hereby ordain, and then those choices are set forth with no instruction on how to resolve that choice. And I think you need to have an instruction in the ordinance on how to resolve the choice because it will, that's.
Otherwise, the choices are permanently.
Otherwise, the choices are permanent. That's right.
So would, could this stand and then have a second motion that you could?
I think it's easier, cleaner to maybe rescind or this one. And tell me, Councilmember Snyder, if this language meets your objective. The ordinance that has been attached to the staff report would read, and now therefore the City of Falls Church hereby ordains that the solid waste collection fee for FY '26 shall be at most $292 per year for a 35 gallon refuse cart and at most $336 per year for a 65 gallon refuse cart effective July 1, 2025, with council to select the exact fees upon second reading, which fees, once adopted, shall continue in effect until amended by subsequent action of the city council.
Madam Mayor, the reason why I moved for optional right now is because there was some confusion, and I thought furthermore research by you, as to, you know, adjusting up or down. And so I wanted to preserve the option for the $100. Absolutely, as well as preserving the option if you say that in fact, we can't make the correction on second reading, that we preserve the original. The issue was up or down, and up or down to whom? Do you know what I mean?
Right. So if we did it this way, the way I just read, you're correct, there's kind of no, there's no ability to move up in either case to a higher dollar amount. But in each case, you could move lower. And would that cover the alternatives you're seeking to?
Not really, because with the $100 difference, you'd be raising the 65 and lowering the 35. So it was how you preserve the opportunity to vote either, depending on your research, to vote on second reading, so we don't have to go back again, right? So we move forward.
Okay. Well, then perhaps the only language needed to be added is with the decision of those alternatives to be made upon second reading.
Yeah.
Yep.
So do we need to rescind the previous motion and do it again?
Can we do a motion to reconsider or?
You can do a motion to reconsider or a motion to rescind. And once that motion's adopted, then you can do a new motion that's identical with the selection language in there.
Okay, so I move to rescind the ordinance that I moved a few minutes ago.
I'll second. Okay, so we have Underhill on the second to rescind the previous motion. Do we need to vote on this and then have a new motion? Okay, let's vote on rescinding the motion for TO 25-15. Call roll.
Are we ready, Ms. Conley?
Rescinding the previous one, yes.
Yes. Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Seanz Hiscott?
That was a yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Okay, now, City Attorney, if you could give us the wording. So we want to preserve two options to be voted on, depending upon, in part, your research as well as, you know, other discussions.
Thank you. Well, the wording would be whatever you said in the original, but I would add language to specify that council shall select the exact fees upon second reading. And that's it.
And the two options of fees that you read, Dave, were 292 slash 327 and then 236 slash 336 respectively for the 35 gallon cart and the 65 gallon cart.
All right, I would move that, and then the additional language was?
With council to, with council to select the exact fee schedule upon second reading.
And we'll add that in the, we'll put that in the public hearing ad as well, so people will know there are two options.
Do we know what we're voting on? That's the most, and does the city clerk?
Yes, do you know what you're voting?
Yes.
Do you need a repeat of what we're voting on?
I don't think we have a second yet. We had Mr. Snyder make the motion. Do we have a second?
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Do we need to say everything out loud again? Are we clear what we're voting on? We're voting on the same thing that we just rescinded with the language that council gets aside at second reading.
Counsel, could I request like a three-minute recess, and we're going to draft the motion so it can be read and then seconded? It is pretty important that we get this right. I think it'd be worth three minutes just to let us write it.
And we have five, and then we can use the rest. Draft started here.
Perfect. Thank you.
Take a five-minute recess.
Okay, take a five-minute recess.
...
...
...
...
I want to play.
I think we need to allow 30 seconds.
30 seconds.
This is insane.
Thank you.
I have emailed the motion. There's a press session motion that needs to be heard because there's a motion on the table. And then start again. Okay. I'm email.
Third time's a charm.
I have 327 down.
All right, are we ready?
It was 2-2 slash 327.
Cable's ready. Salad. Can you email it to me?
Oh, good, thank you.
Ah, I see it. Thank you. Okay. It's really good to hear.
To write with this.
236, 336.
You got your... And this one is fixed. All right, our riveting television is television. Are we ready? Riveting cable television. Yeah. They are.
Okay, let's return to our meeting. Thank you to staff and everyone for our patience. We currently have a motion on the table that we need to withdraw to get the language right based on what the city attorney has offered us, and so do we have a motion to withdraw?
I move to withdraw the motion currently on the table.
Do we have a second?
A second.
It was Underhill also in the second. We got a vote.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Shanshiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero, thank you.
Third time's a charm.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I move to grant first reading to TO 25-15. Schedule a public hearing and second reading for September 8, 2025, and advertise the same according to law with the following modified language in the enacting clause. Now therefore, the City of Falls Church hereby ordains that the solid waste collection fee shall be either one, $292 per year for a 35-gallon refuse card, and $327 per year for a 65-gallon refuse card, or two, $236 per year for a 35-gallon refuse card, and $336 per year for a 65-gallon refuse card, with counsel to select one of the two alternatives upon second reading, with such selected alternative being effective July 1, 2025, and to remain in effect until amended by subsequent action of the city council.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Second.
Underhill on the second? Call roll, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Shanshiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero, thank you.
Thank you, and then we have the third item, related item, which is the tax rate ordinance.
And the tax ordinance is to amend the rate of tax levy on real estate for tax year 2026 as previously set in ordinance 2091 in order to account for revenue generated from a new solid waste fee. And so the reduction will be a penny and a half from the current rate set by ordinance 291 of $1.20, so the resulting rate will be $1.18.5.
Do we need further discussion on this, or is there a motion?
I move to grant first reading to TO 25-16. Schedule a public hearing and second reading for September 8, 2025, and advertise the same according to law.
Second.
Eric Connolly in the second. Call roll, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Shanshiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero, thank you, counsel.
Thank you to staff and to counsel. I wanted to just commend my colleagues for solving this problem that I think has been before us for a long time. I think we've come close to the edge for however many years, maybe 2010, whenever we last adopted the big fee ordinance, and so I'm glad that we have wrestled with this and hopefully we can get to the finish line at second reading. So appreciate the work of the task force and staff for getting us here. Okay, are we ready to move on to other business?
There are two last items on the agenda, and the first is authorize the purchasing agent on behalf of the city to award up to $580,750 in a contract with Imperial Construction LLC for the construction of the Greenway Downs Neighborhood Traffic Calming Project. There were a few questions from the council at the work session, and essentially, we have gone through the contracts, we're comfortable with the completion guarantees, we're also comfortable with the whole bidding process, and so staff is recommending moving forward with this construction contract. Be happy to answer any questions, and note that Ms. Brain is still here at this late hour, and she can answer any questions the council might have as well.
It looks like Laura has her hand up.
Thank you, and thanks for, Ms. Brain, for staying. I had bumped into a community member who lives on Cameron and had talked about the fact that on the Fairfax side, Greenway Downs has a nice path to get through the neighborhood, and I think, as you can see on the map, I believe there's, I think the mayor said they're called paper streets, but there's a path that goes, I think, from West Moreland all the way to Marshall. And he, and I think this has been brought up a couple times, but that that path, people use it, but it's in disrepair, it's really muddy, and he had thought that part of this project would take care of that path. I didn't know about it, I hadn't heard, I didn't think that was the case, but I'm not sure where he got that understanding from. I don't know if anyone could shed some light on that.
Yes, so there's a 10-foot-wide paper street that goes through Greenway Downs Neighborhood, and we can follow up to respond to that question. Okay, go ahead.
When this was first floated to the neighborhood, there was a proposal that perhaps that path could be turned into asphalt. So that was one of the very first proposals, and then it turned out that the path wasn't wide enough in certain spots, and there was concern about runoff and the slope of it, so that got pulled out of the proposal.
It was also difficult to get to ADA compliance within the scope and the cost, the budget of the project.
Right, but that was definitely something that your person may have heard of from their street representative talking about what could happen, because that's definitely what happened on my street, people saying, "Oh, this is great, we can push our strollers on it now," and then it just disappeared because it wasn't feasible.
But it was indeed part of the early analysis.
Yeah.
That's what I assumed, as I talked it through with him, I thought, well, asphalt would probably make water runoff worse during the heavy storms, and there was the ADA issue too. So as we sort of talked about it, it seemed to me that there probably wasn't a great solution, but I just wanted to bring it up. Thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments about the Greenway Downs Traffic Calming Project? If not, is there a motion?
Move to authorize the purchasing agent on behalf of the city to award up to $580,750 in a contract with Imperial Construction LLC for the Greenway Downs Neighborhood Traffic Calming Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is Flynn on the second? Call roll, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Shanshiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero, thank you.
And then the last item is authorize the purchasing agent on behalf of the city to sign a contract with Ecosystem LLC for the purchase of nutrient credits in a contract amount up to $640,000 per fiscal year, and to renew the contract annually for four additional one-year terms, subject to annual appropriation of funds. And so this is to meet our mandated total maximum daily load mandate, and we do as much as we can through projects in the city. Because we are fully built out and, you know, a very dense city, we're not able to remove all of the phosphorus and nitrogen that's called for by the Chesapeake Bay regulations within the boundaries of the city, and so we're proposing that we purchase a portion of those nutrient credits in this way. It is, these projects are in the Chesapeake Bay watershed, so they do have the direct benefit ultimately for removing these nutrients from the watershed and avoiding the algae blooms that cause the dead zones in the Chesapeake Bay. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. The staff report did, since you last saw it, did add more information sort of on a granular level of what our projects in the city have done for removing of these key indicator pollutants, and we can answer any questions you might have about that.
Do we have questions for Wyatt? Dave?
There was some discussion, I think, during our work session about urban areas were sort of unfairly penalized and rural areas less so in order to deal with the nutrient issues, so I just thought that might be on the record and maybe something we could pursue in the legislative committee. The second issue is, does this come about as a result of our mixed-use developments or general developments, or what's the origin? Because as we all recognize, this is a significant amount of money, it's more than a cent, it's a cent on the tax rate.
So it's both by right development, the cities adopted local ordinances which follow the state ordinance, the model ordinances, require homeowners, when they redevelop their property, to put in best management practices to capture these pollutions. In addition, when we have special exceptions that go through the city council approval process, the city council has been able to get additional voluntary concessions where they go above and beyond the code requirements, and so those have been some of our largest projects in terms of taking phosphorus and nitrogen out of the watershed.
So what I'm hearing is the expenditure of this money is inescapable.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Okay, do we have a motion then?
Okay, I'll move to authorize the purchasing agent on behalf of the city to sign a contract with Ecosystem LLC for purchase of nutrient credits in a contract amount up